Hi, good evening. It is 6:30 on Tuesday, October 27th, and we have a quorum here in the room and we have one council member by, virtually with us. And unfortunately, Councilmember Peterson is so sick. When he called me to tell me that he wasn't going to be able to come, when he started coughing, I was afraid I was going to get it over the phone. So bless his heart and let's all keep him in thoughts and prayers for a speedy recovery. The City of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30 and I am calling us to order. If everyone would please rise, we will say both the pledges. If you would please remain standing. Chaplain Cottle was going to give us our invocation tonight as noted on the agenda, but he is tied up and our city manager has graciously agreed. If you would please bow your heads. Mr. Hoffman?
Heavenly Father, Provider of every good and gracious blessing, help us to recognize where those blessings come from. Help us to recognize what little we do to receive those blessings. Help us to recognize your gifts of grace and mercy and forgiveness and for us in particular, the gift of living here, working here, the opportunity to serve, the opportunity to serve you alongside similarly gifted people. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffman. May I all be seated? Moving on, we are going to go to my mayor's report and I actually turned one in late, but turned one in, so it wasn't in the packet, but I do have some really cool pictures. Colin, if you'll go to the next slide. Today at noon, the Texas Downtown Association did their virtual awards and Copper Shot Distillery, who was a finalist in the best commercial interior, actually won best commercial interior. Yay! There's Sherri Tody. I said, "Give me a victory snap." There she was. And the picture below is the Main Street Director out of San Marcos, who serves on the Texas Downtown Association Board. And tomorrow at lunch, there are two, there's some more awards that are being given out. And Neighbors Kitchen and Yard, they are up for best downtown business. They are finalists for that category. And the brand-new category this year is best digital campaign. And the City of Bastrop is up for our downtown Bastrop curbside project. So that's a founding. They've never had that category before and so if you think about it, you can catch it. If you follow Texas Downtown Association, you can, they have little videos, really neat. So we will be wishing them the best of luck, but certainly congratulate Copper Shot Distillery. Congratulations to Stephen and Sherri. If you go to the next slide, I actually, I am getting out and doing things. I'm just not doing quite as much as I used to, but I have some really fun ones to share with you. In the upper left-hand corner, you will see that the most important thing, I have already voted and I will make an aside, I've also gotten my flu shot. So if you have not done those two things, please make sure that you get those two things done. Would encourage everyone to early vote and remind you that the, over at the county annex, it's open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. through Friday. So please, please get out and vote. Right below that is Jonas Wilson. And there, it was just recently released and we'll get an update from Visit Bastrop and Susan may be mad at me for stealing her thunder, but I looked through her presentation and I didn't see a picture of Jonas, so I wanted, it just came out. It is the coolest thing ever. It's a video. He does three live songs in three different locations. It's super cool. Be cool, be cool like Bastrop. Just really, really a neat deal. So I would encourage you to, I know we'll have, you'll be able to go to the city site and the Visit Bastrop site and there'll be a million links to that video, I'm sure. Then below that, you will see that I visited with Mrs. Ruse's second-grade class, which I think I would rather go to the dentist than get grilled by really sharp second graders that ask you lots of hard questions, but I really enjoyed being with them. You can see that we've all got our masks on and we were socially distanced outside and it's, it was a neat opportunity. They're learning about civics and I usually go at least once a year with the second-grade class. In the upper right-hand corner, just a Saturday ago, you'll see that I was a part of the Pinky Promise and it is a really neat program that we're doing, trying to get mammograms to everybody that needs it in the county. That is Robbie from Seton. And the, if you make the Pinky Promise the right way, it makes a heart in the middle. It's really cute. But the thing to notice is I was hot in a tee-shirt and now I'm freezing to death. So we love living in central Texas. The other thing I got to do was judge a Lego contest from the BISD ACE Program. Had a Lego contest and you can see they were, the goal was, they had to make a meal for a giant. They all had the same Lego set and they had to create a meal for the giant. And this person had a snake-bitten cow, because giants would like that sort of thing, and rice and a tablecloth. And you can see they even have ketchup for their steak. One of the other meals was a unicorn steak with rotten cheddar broccoli and rice casserole. It was the most fun I've ever had. The kids were great and that was a picture of me taking a picture of being able to interact with all the kids. So that was a really, really fun thing to do and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. I've also, and several other, a couple of those other council members did it as well, participated in two conferences over the last couple of weeks. The Texas Economic Development Corporation for the entire state, they had their conference and the Texas Municipal League Conference. So been doing a lot of virtual conferencing during October. If you swap to the next page, you'll see some of the upcoming things and I already mentioned the TDA Awards that will be going on virtually tomorrow. And I wanted to make sure everybody knew that TechDOT is hosting State Highway 71 and McAllister Road. If you know someone who lives in Tahitian Village, if you know someone who's interested in that area, it is going to be a virtual public input at 6:00 p.m. And look, I even put the WWW, this is pretty tricky, techsdot.gov. So you'll be able to find it and would encourage you to participate in that. I'll be going to the Best Breakfast. I don't know why, but I left out Halloween, so I apologize. I see Terry in the audience. Mayfest at Halloween from 5:00 to 7:00 and Pecan Street will be closed from 6:00 to 8:00. So Halloween will be going on. Everybody, please be safe. And the, out at Mayfest, it's a drive-through Halloween, so it is a COVID-safe, socially-distanced Halloween. If you are interested in where the benches are going to be permanently located on Main Street, there's a walk-through that afternoon. I've got a library board meeting. And then, we need a round of applause. Drusilla Rogers has successfully run a small business, The Sugar Shack, for 25 years. Let's have a round of applause. Pretty good for somebody who started when they were five. I'm pretty impressed. We'll have our next council meeting on November 10th and then there were things that I wanted to mention. Most importantly, on the 12th, if you serve on one of our boards and commissions, you've gotten an invitation and may have gotten a phone call from someone, please let us know if you're coming to the dinner. We're going to still have that. It will be, everything will be social distancing, COVID-safe, but interested. We always want to appreciate our volunteers and also want everyone to realize that we have canceled the second meeting in November. So we are not meeting the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. We'll have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. And last, but by no means least, right now, this very moment, you can register for Making Bastrop Bright and you can register until November 30th. It's a very easy registration. Council, you have a copy of the flyer and I know they're going to have those for some vendors. It's basically letting the, instead of doing our lighted Christmas parade, we're trying to get everybody to decorate and then folks will be able to drive around and see some really cool decorations. So please check out Making Bastrop Bright. It's one of our banners on our website, so it's an easy thing to find if you want some more information. And that is my mayor's report. Councilmember Rogers, let's start with you. Do you have anything for us this evening?
Well, I am excited. Main Street doing the walkthrough, so if you're interested in that, on where you're going to put the trash cans, the bike racks and benches, please join us and give us your input. If not, we're going to put them where we want them. And then the trees are going to be coming in, right? The trees will be planted.
Yes, they're starting to plant.
Already on their way. So Main Street's working hard.
We're getting, we're getting there, definitely. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Just a quick comment, Madam Mayor. I noticed that here we are toward the end of October and you've only attended 313 events. I would suggest you step your game up a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
To meet the event per day, but I have nothing else.
Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last council meeting, I've chaired the Cultural Arts Master Plan Work Group. Had a great meeting. Our city manager emceeded, if you can say it was emceeing. It was facilitating, actually, but he did a wonderful job. We're well on our way to coming up with some recommendations for council. Then on the 21st, HLC, the Historical Landmark Commission, met and I was at that meeting and they did their hard work as usual and helped some folks do some additions in upgrading to their properties in a historical manner and that's what I have to report.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes. I'd just like to say that the TML Conference, although it was virtual, was really educational. I enjoyed taking a lot of the different classes and going to the meetings and of course, serving with you on the board for our board meeting there. I met with the Texas Music Friendly, or the Bastrop Music Friendly Group and like you said, the presentation that Jonas did with the tour of the music sites downtown is just fantastic and so is the article that was in the Chronicle about Bastrop music. We call it Satellite of the Music Capital of Texas and so it was very interesting and I'm really proud of that. I'm looking forward also to the walk downtown with the completion of Main Street to find out more about the benches and things. And other than that, congratulations to Drusilla also for The Sugar Shack.
Thank you very much. City Manager, it's up to you.
Thanks, Mayor. Colin, I got away without having to click. Are you going to walk me through it? Oh, Trey is, thank you. Yeah. Appreciate that, sir. So not to restate too much what the mayor already went over in her excellent report, but just to reiterate the alternatives that we will be publicizing information on that people have for celebrating Halloween and how to do it safely. Thank you, Ms. Moore in YMCA, for providing a safe alternative at Mayfest Park with the drive-by Halloween activity that you've got planned. And yeah, we will be closing, like we did last year, a block in some of the side streets on Pecan Street. We're doing that at Chief Nagy's suggestion, hoping to keep people safe, try to avoid vehicle and pedestrian conflicts. And we will be publicizing information and some of that is here at your table, Council, on CDC guidance for how to approach Halloween safely. That will be the focus of our messaging. Thank you, Trey. And again, the mayor covered this as well, but maybe just to drive home some of the points about specific timeframes for our holiday decoration contest that we're calling Making Bastrop Bright. This is the first year we've done this. It actually came up as sort of a replacement for the parade that we typically have here. We will see how this goes and if it is as popular as we hope it is, we will look to repeat this for coming years. Thanks, Trey. And this slide provides a little bit of, bit of specificity on how we will be publicizing the registration information and how people are able to vote. The mayor mentioned that it will be an easy online process. People can register to allow their decorations to be voted on, both businesses and residents, and anyone can vote. And you can vote multiple times, kind of like the Major League All-Star Game. We've commented already about what's going on on Main Street, including the November 2nd bench walk. What I will add to the conversation is that we are targeting that Saturday of Thanksgiving week, November 28th, for a ribbon-cutting event. Council and the public, you'll get more information on that here shortly. There will be a lot going on on November 28th. That's also the day we'll be having the annual Wassel Fest and doing that in a safe way on Main Street. And later that evening, early, late afternoon, is when the mayor will flip the switch, virtually this time, on turning on the Christmas lights on our Christmas tree. And again, people will be able to watch that virtually. People will be able to watch that on a giant screen over at Film Alley. And again, we'll be publicizing that more as we get closer to the event. A quick update on my gov training to emphasize what we are doing to make this as user-friendly as possible. The staff team is currently creating a how-to user guide that is preparing us to go out there into the community and actually train people and train groups on how to use the system. We've been specifically asked to do something like that for folks who use our senior center and we're, again, gearing up for that and we'll be ready to roll that out in January and make that better as we go. And the slide lists the city staff team that will, are preparing for that. We're learning a lot as we go through this and it'll be that staff team who is actually providing the training. And as the mayor said, we have a council meeting coming up on November the 10th. Council, you've heard me describe these items already to you, but I will, I will point out one item that's actually not on the list. We are scheduled to bring back a fairly minor amendment to our contract with Visit Bastrop. You guys talked about that at the August annual joint meeting with the Visit Bastrop Board and that should be a fairly straightforward item. That'll be on your November 10th council agenda. And I think this is my last slide, Council, at our October 13th meeting. You heard a presentation from Jennifer Bills about proposed amendments to our B3 codes as it regards our enforcement of subdivision requirements in the ETJ. There was some discussion by you guys at that last meeting about scheduling a joint workshop with the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's a regular meeting of the PMZ this coming Thursday. We will have a discussion with them on Thursday evening about dates that they'll be interested in for that joint workshop. We'll be targeting a few days in January. We will also get their direction on additional topics beyond the subdivision requirement stuff, which they've already made recommendation on. There's, there's issues with the sign code we know we want to visit. And there's also some amendments that we're suggesting to what the code says about the operations of the Internal Development Review Committee that we'll want to discuss with Council and PMZ as well. So we're targeting January after the holidays for that workshop. And I will also say that the work to prepare for that is, at this point, a completely internal staff effort and for the time being, we won't be using any consultants. We'll see what we need to do with regard to consulting help after we get feedback from PMZ and the city council. So I think that's my last slide. Thank you, Council.
Great. Thank you very much, City Manager. All right, Council, we are moving on to Page Two. We're on Item 4D. Receive a presentation from Betty Voits, Executive Director of the Capital Area Council of Governments on 50 Years of Service to Our 10 County Region That Includes Bastrop. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yeah, you know, this is, I'm looking forward to this presentation. It's, there are 24 COGS or Council of Governments covering all 254 counties in the state and I've had over, in my career, occasion to work directly or indirectly with about 14 of them with colorful names like DEPCOG, ETCOG, HOTCOG, HGAG, or more generic names like SETRPC down in Beaumont. We have CAPCOG and CAPCOG has Betty. And they're celebrating 50 years of service in this region and I think the transition from when this organization first started to now is fairly dramatic. So Betty, the floor is yours.
Thanks for having me here. We would not be active if we didn't work closely with our local cities and counties, so I always appreciate getting a chance to talk to you all. I'm only the second executive director in CAPCOG's 50th history, 50-year history, so that's always interesting to come after, come in after somebody who's been there like 30 years, right? Okay, so I'm going to talk really fast and then, you know, wave at me if I need to stop and answer a question, otherwise I'll take them at the end. Okay, so really quickly, people say, "What is a COG?" Well, there's, there's over 500 of them in every state in the United States. We do regional things and that usually means economies of scale, cost effectiveness, and things that really can't be done in an individual city or county, like air quality planning. We started out serving nine counties, turned out Blanco County, changed their mind, came in to make the 10th county, and we've been that way ever since. By statute, we're in the Local Government Code and we're a political subdivision, but we can't tax and we have no regulatory authority. So we're pretty safe as political subdivisions go. We operate purely on state and federal grants and then 911 fees and we like to say we're one of the most efficient governments. Why? Because we work on a reimbursement basis, so we don't get paid unless we do the work. And so we have a very finite budget each year and we can't go over it because, you know, we're on grants. So just briefly, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson mentioned 14 COGS, so all 24 COGS have these programs. And I'm not going to go into each one here, I'm going to talk about it as it relates to us. So first of all, our biggest budget, part of our budget is 911. We're one of the, we're the largest 911 program of all the COGS, including Dallas, Houston, and San Antonio, because we are blessed to have our biggest city and our biggest county in our 911 program. And the other regions, they have their own. So needless to say, that subsidizes us heavily and gives our region a chance to do an awful lot of things we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. Right there, you see the backup 911 center. That's available to any city and county to use if they need it, which could be equipment frying, flooding, you get, you know, out of your communication center. And then we also do all the mapping. So we were the first COG to actually file a bill and become an emergency communications district. Why does that matter? Because the COGS, the other ones are still under a state program. We started doing this so we could get the money directly to ourselves. So the 911 fees come straight to us. Houston and Dallas followed us and did the same thing. So we love to be leaders. Basically, the fees, you all pay them on your phone bills, you know that, but what do we use the money for? Well, basically, we don't hire the people that take the calls and we don't pay for the equipment they sit in, but we do everything else. The call-taking equipment, the mapping, the software, the network into the center. And we have dual network for redundancy, all of the public education equipment or public education information. We do all the training for the call-takers because now the state wants to license them, just like a police officer. And I'm going to keep going, so I can keep going fast. Our biggest department is the Area Agency on Aging. We have 28 employees there and we do a lot of different things. You can see a lot of training is going on there. We have a information referral hotline that is available for seniors, their caregivers, whoever needs us. We do a lot of care coordination, which is direct care for seniors and their families, benefits counseling, financial support, caregiver, and we arrange for programs in seniors' homes when they need it. They need a ramp built or we're doing a lot of income support right now. It's huge and fortunately, there's a lot of extra cares money for senior services. We got real creative trying to get meals out to seniors and just started doing grocery boxes of staple foods. We also, a couple of years ago, convinced the state to let us do frozen meal delivery. That's controversial because you want, you know, you want people to be delivering a meal every day so they're having that interaction with a senior, but that's just not always possible and we thought it was more important to make sure they were eating. So in some places, and also getting people to deliver is hard. So in some places, we just do frozen foods for the whole week and that's really helped. We contract with carts for services for seniors to mainly medical appointments. We also contract with Meals on Wheels and senior centers to still do, we still want them to go and have congregant meals and get out of their house, but obviously, these days, that's not possible. And then we do a lot of proactive, health and wellness, nutrition, that kind of thing. Okay, so this is kind of interesting. After 9/11, Governor Perry decided the COG should be in charge of Homeland Security because it needed to be done at a regional level. That way, we could stretch the money and target it toward regional assets instead of trying to give every city or county a little dribble of money that you couldn't do anything with. Up in the right-hand corner is a media event. We have worn central Texas, I'm sure you've heard about it. We started paying for that years ago so that people would get notified of emergencies, but we're never completely happy that there's enough people that have signed up for it. So we were doing this outreach event and as it happened, the outreach event, unbeknownst to us, ended up being scheduled three days before Hurricane Harvey hit. So we had a lot of people sign up. It crashed our website. The hurricane got their attention. If we could be lucky enough to manage to do outreach before a disaster, obviously, nobody wants a disaster, but boy, it sure worked getting people to sign up. We work with the emergency management coordinators from all 10 counties, the largest cities, and we've been working with them a lot on even the pandemic. I mean, Homeland Security was started out as terrorism, but then it became wildfires and then it became flooding and now it's pandemic. And so we're kind of boots-on-the-ground working with that level of folks. And we have, we do planning, even though we're, we've got money coming in pretty soon for Homeland Security grants, we have, that committee is so active, they meet every month. And all the emergency management folks work constantly on everything from protocols on how to respond to recovery and resiliency, technology and cybersecurity. And I want to tell you that when Bastrop had its complex fires, all nine of the other county emergency management coordinators came out here to help Mike Fisher. That's what we do when it's a regional effort and it's important to share those resources. So our Community Economic Development Department that Rachel Steele's been running is kind of a hodgepodge of smaller programs. The top looks like law enforcement training, but it's actually a criminal justice committee deciding on how money should be targeted. We do transportation and economic development planning, so that bottom-left corner, we were out in Blanco County doing a plan for them recently. And then we run the solid waste program and we give out a lot of money for recycling and that bottom-right corner is a household hazardous waste collection event. And so you see that department and all the little dribbles of money. The problem we have is that, as efficient as we are, if we don't have funding to charge somebody's time to work on something, we can't do it. So we have all these little grants that we get so that we have a place to charge somebody's time so they can go work on this and go work on that. And it gets to be a challenge. Of our budget, which is, you know, in the neighborhood of 30 million, the local dues are critical to us. They are only 270,000 of our whole budget, but we use it to match most of our programs. Regional planning and development. On the top, you see basically our air quality program, that's our website. In the left corner, we were doing flooding mitigation planning and we actually did that for Hayes County after the 2015 Memorial Day floods. And then we also did it for La Grange after Harvey, which basically, we can predict where it's going to flood next time. it's going to flood next time and show you the boundaries, which, you know, gets to be a sensitive issue because, you know, people don't want you to take their property away or tell them they can't build in that flood zone. That department there focuses on air quality. The cities and counties help make up our budget because the governor vetoed our money back in the 2017 session, which was a shock to us because we had had an air quality program for 20 years funded by the state. The reason that's important is because we're one of about nine regions in Texas that's what they call a near non-attainment area. We go into non-attainment, we wouldn't be getting Tesla right now. If San Antonio had been in non-attainment, Toyota plant wouldn't have gone in there. Now they are in non-attainment and they're real close to us. So we need to continue to be vigilant. And we have seven monitors around the region that are, belong to the COG because the two that are, the ones that really control air quality as far as the state's concerned are in the middle of Austin. So that doesn't really tell us anything. So we have monitors on the west side and the east side so we can actually tell you what bad air moved in and what moved out, not what we created within our region. We also do GIS mapping for every, we pay every county to do that. So Bastrop County gets paid to do that. Why does that matter? Because in 911, when we go to a total digital environment, those maps will actually route where the calls go so they go to the correct communication center. It's not the way it works right now. That probably doesn't mean a lot to you, so here's something that does. We will be able to identify exactly where a wireless call is coming from. We can't do that now. If, I tell people all the time, if you have small kids and you want to make sure when you call 911, somebody will find you, it needs to be a landline. Okay, so law enforcement training. I did this presentation for the San Marcos Council. They thought that the guy was shooting a gun at the cadets. That's actually pepper spray because when we do our training, we make sure they know how that feels. We've also been doing training on how to do investigations and gather evidence if you have gas pumps that are getting skimmed. And that's what Roger, our chief instructor, is doing down there. Somebody donated that gas pump to us. I don't know where we're keeping it. Anyway, so we get funded from the governor's office to have a law enforcement academy. All COGS do law enforcement training. We are the academy for the cities and counties that aren't so huge, they have their own. Austin and Travis County have their own. They only train their own, which is good because we depend on earning the last third of our budget through tuitions and fees. We try to provide training that the local chiefs and sheriffs need, but we also do all the mandated in-service training on the two-year cycles that the state wants. And we also do jailer training. We do a lot of that in conjunction with Bastrop County. And then a lot of other things you can see down there. There's a lot of other plans we do. That's just a list of them. We're always doing some kind of plan, but they're tied specifically to programs. Right now, we're doing the 2020-2025 Regional Economic Development Plan, and that will be adopted in December. So, and I don't, I don't remember if I have somebody from Bastrop on there, but I know Adina Lewis is actively involved. And we're always looking for people on our committees, so keep that in mind. Our total budget's 32 million. We're, we're like a university. We have to allocate costs because everything has to be either indirect or directly charged. Those are some of the things that we're doing going forward. And that's our region and that's our governance and that's our board. And we very much like having Mayor Pro Tem Nelson on there. Last year was the first year that I had three people on our 25-member board representing Bastrop County, Councilmember Gordon from Smithville, and then, of course, also Judge Poppy. I always push to get more people from our area on there, but most elected officials know I live in Bastrop County, so that gets a little suspicious sometimes when I'm trying to push too much. But we try to do geographic representation and I'm happy to say that, well, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson can tell you, but when the board comes together, they're, they really do a good job of keeping away from the urban, rural, city, county partisan stuff and really work at being regional. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. That is phenomenal information. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Wolf? Thank you for your time and we're glad you've moved closer to the city and we look forward to seeing you.
Yes. Yeah, we looked for a house in the city, but we couldn't actually find one. And, you know, and we sold our house and then we had a really narrow window to find something. So I'm okay with the colony, but I really wanted an old house. So it could still happen. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. All right, Counsel, we're, yeah, you can leave it there or give it to Trey, either one. We're moving on to item 4E, a proclamation for the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas recognizing November 5th, 2020 as City of Bastrop Arbor Day. So I have a proclamation here and we are a tree city and we are thrilled to be a tree city. And I will read just a smidge of this proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the world in many languages and cultures, whereas all across Texas, from towering pines to majestic oaks to scrubby mesquites, the many trees of Texas are beautiful and prominent features of our unique and breathtaking landscape. Whereas when we encourage people in our community to plant trees and celebrate them on the first Friday each November on Texas Arbor Day, and whereas this holiday for trees is an opportunity to teach fundamental lessons about stewardship of our natural resources and caring for our environment. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and enjoyment. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize November 5th, 2020 as Arbor Day. And with us this evening, we have Carrie Fossler, who serves on our Parks Board. So if Carrie will come forward, I'll be happy to give her this proclamation. Let's have a round of applause for Carrie. And Curtis Hancock, our Public Works Director, that's our liaison for the Parks Board. If Colin gets a chance, he's going to take a picture of Carrie and Curtis with the, and he's giving me the, "Yeah, yeah, I know." So, okay, moving on to our next proclamation, which is for Veterans Day, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas and Bastrop County Commissioners Court recognizing November 11th, 2020 as Veterans Day. And Counsel, we have, as we've done many times in the past, we have a joint proclamation with Commissioners Court and they approved this yesterday, I think, or yes, I think yesterday. And so we'll be, we're doing it tonight. But this year, different than we've done before, I wanted to recognize all of the veterans that are in our organization and most especially recognize the service from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and Councilmember Bill Peterson. You'll see the list of names and I believe that it's folks with a giving and caring heart that are willing to serve others. They find themselves serving in the public. If you are a veteran, would you please stand? Thank you for your service. Whereas we, Bastrop City Council and the Bastrop County Commissioners Court come together on Veterans Day to pay tribute to men and women who serve our great nation with distinction in the United States Armed Forces, both in peacetime and in war. And whereas on Veterans Day, Americans across this land thank our veterans for their service in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard, whether active duty, Reserve, or National Guard. And whereas on Veterans Day, our community expresses a continuing sense of gratitude to those who give so much in the defense of their freedoms, which we all enjoy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bastrop County Commissioners Court and the Bastrop City Council hereby encourage all citizens to join in the celebration of Veterans Day. One of the things that I am really missing in 2020 is the car show and the veterans parade, and that is such a phenomenal, phenomenal event. So it's a, it's a hole in my heart this year, but we'll look forward to getting back to business in 2021. But with or without the car show, it doesn't make us any less thankful for your service. So thank you. All right, moving on, and Mr. Wegmiller's wife wants him to come get her sometime this evening, so we're going to skip over to item 5C, receive presentation for the specialized public finance, the city's financial advisors on the limited tax note issuance and timeline. And I think, Dan, they're going to, Tracy said, y'all know Dan, he can do it. So thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Great. Thank you all very much. Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance. The item tonight is just to go over with you the timeframe and timeline to issue the $1 million in limited tax notes. We plan to do this through a competitive bank placement, which is the way we did your refunding earlier this year. The banks continue to bid very strong and be very productive participants in the municipal market. And this size issue makes a lot of sense to take to the marketplace. In that manner, we will save on some issuance costs because we won't require a bond rating for this issue to move forward. The offering documents are not produced to the same level. It's a simple term sheet. So the schedule, as we've laid it out, is to put the term sheet out for bid in mid-November. We will bring those bids back in December 7th. Then I will come to Council on December 8th and report those bids and close by the end of the year. And so that is the plan for the limited tax note issue. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel and, and the general public, if you look at our fiscal budget, if you look on page eight, you will see the items, and I believe it's also included in the staff report of why we are doing this short-term tax note. Any questions for Mr. Wegmiller? Great job.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Be safe driving home. All right, Colin, now we'll, we'll go backwards. We're on item 5A, discussion regarding the City of Bastrop Parks Sidewalk Connectivity Project. Mr. Hancock. Good evening.
As y'all know, this is a long time coming. We've talked about connecting the parks through the, with the sidewalks. Well, tonight, we're bringing you the first phase of what we're looking at doing and with, looking for your input. We'll be starting at the Jewel Hodges Park, which is located on Hill and Lynn. And we'll come down, if you'll notice the stop signs, we put them on there for a special reason so you know it's a controlled intersection. That is why we decided how we're going to run these sidewalks. That determine which side of the road they were going to be on. So we'll come down Linden to Pecan, we'll cross Pecan, come down Pecan, come down to Laurel Street, which is the only controlled intersection running there. So we'll cross the side, we'll come down, you'll be able to pick up Delgado Park from there, carry on out to Main Street, and then Main Street, we'll come on down and keep coming. It connects all the way in, all the yellow is new sidewalks that we're installing. So from where we started to Cypress will be all new sidewalks. As we continue, you'll see the change in color. Although they're saying it's existing sidewalks, some of those will be replaced as well because they're damaged and up and down, yes. That, that bring us all the way down to Farm Street with that. And then showing you this here, just to show you how we get around to get down to the Fisherman's from there. We'll come on down to Spring Street, travel down Spring Street, back up to Church. Of course, at the library, you can go down behind the library, but there is sidewalks in front out there, so we're going to take advantage of those and add that one section in yellow there to tie it in. Because everybody walks down the street. Yeah, they walk down the street. So this way, we can keep them out of the street and on to the side. And this is just a quote, just to give you all an idea of what it's going to cost is 180, 185,000, 148 for that area. And then another area we're looking at is the connecting of, starting there at the railroad tracks on Wilson and coming all the way to Cedar. Cedar, it has sidewalks, so we can then pick up there and take them to Main Street to where they can hit the trail that we just came over. And this here, you can see this in, what, 34,000? And overall, this funding, we have funding sources from the Traffic Safety Capital Outlay money. We have $405,000 in it. And it's broke down in each individual deal. You can see $170,000 of it will come from Linden all the way up to Sprint, to Farm Street with the work there. And then Fisherman's Park, that one section I showed you all to connect those sidewalks, existing sidewalks, is 14,418. Then Wilson Street is 34,905 for a total cost of $220,053. That would leave us with a balance of 184,974. The yellow dots will show you, we're just showing you how it will connect. But adding these sidewalks down Main and everything, now we're going from the far end of town and we can be able to come all the way to Fisherman's, but then also, it will also connect us all the way to Bob Bryant because we have sidewalks over there. So that's quite a bit of area for that amount of money.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Hancock?
You stole my word, Mayor. Excellent. Great job.
So, because we have to ask questions because I, you know, you stayed after work and everything, so I have to ask you some questions. All of the sidewalks are inside the right-of-way, so we don't have any easements to acquire. None of that is an issue.
Everything's in second.
Do we know where the right-of-way is in all these locations?
Yes.
Excellent. And so we've picked the side and people know and it's our right-of-way because, you know, some folks think everything between their front door and the pavement is their property. So...
Right. Well, we, we did door hangers to each resident along the route. I received three calls to date and they were handed out about a month and a half, two months ago, just so we would be prepared for you.
I think that is...
But I knew you would ask.
Yeah, well, and I'm, I knew you guys had done a communication plan and that's so vitally important for folks to know. City Manager?
And Mayor and Counsel will also point out that your first council meeting in December will bring back a contract for you to award. That's the schedule.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Counselmember Rogers?
Do we, do we know when you hopefully plan to complete? Are we thinking it might be done by the summer? What are you, what are you thinking?
Well, in reality, I'm thinking if y'all, we bring it back to you on December, we should be able to start in January. And then I can have you a timeline from the contractor when I come back in December, telling y'all how far. I mean, because we're going to do it, we're going to make sure our customers know that we're coming. We're not just going to drop it on them. And if we, we might need to work around. We may need to skip a section because someone's remodeling their home, but we'll make sure we have all that before we come back to you.
I guess I just wanted to let the, the people know that it isn't something we're thinking now and we're not going to start it till 2025. We're looking that, that we're going to finish this. We're picking it up, we've got a plan, and we're going to get going. You know, they've heard about sidewalks for years, so I just wanted them to know it wasn't something that we're...
Y'all prove it, we're going to start it and we'll get it done.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Great job. Oh, go ahead, Counselmember Jackson.
No, I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of this. I've started walking on the Riverwalk and so, but the connectivity throughout the town with, to make Bastrop a more walkable city, I think is good. It's a good form of exercise and it will encourage, I think, our citizens to be healthier and to walk more. And so I'm really excited about this and I'm sure the citizens will be even more excited once they hear more about it as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselmember Jackson. All right. Don't go, oh, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
And I don't think we, we can diminish the safety enhancement aspects of this in any way, shape, or form for, for all of our cities. So I really appreciate you bringing this out. Thank you.
Yeah, it, to Counselmember Rogers' point, it's been discussed a very long time. So we're very happy to see it come to fruition. And don't go far. We're going to item 5B, discussion regarding speed hump policy. Mr. Hancock.
This one won't be quite as clear as the last. But it won't be bad. At the August 25th meeting, y'all asked to bring back some information on the speed hump. So that's what we're here doing tonight. Since then, Public Works Director and the Police Chief have both researched this quite heavily. And we're coming back to ask for ideas or suggestions of what we're bringing you to guide us, which way you want to go with this program. Speed pumps, speed humps can be very effective... Speed humps can be very effective ways to slow traffic, but they can also move traffic, meaning next street over. I can't see that far enough. What we're trying to accomplish, to be responsible to our citizens' concerns about the neighborhood traffic safety. Avoid driver frustration, as y'all know, we tried one thing, and that didn't work. As, as we're going through here, there's a lot of requests, but one of the big requests is, oh, do we need a petition to go through to get this put in? Meaning, everybody in the neighborhood, in that block, in that region, what is the percentage? Is it two-thirds? What is it, would y'all like to see on how many people need to be in agreements to get it? Because if there's two people on the block that want it and eight that don't, we're failed before we begin, if we do install it. Must be in a residential area? Residential area only, with speed limit thirty miles per hour, not allowed in school zones. Reason why it's not allowed in school zone, because it draws attention from your vision, so you're more paying attention to the signs and the stuff, you're not paying attention to the surroundings. Minimum of one block or thousand-foot section. Minimum width, twenty-eight foot, maximum thirty-six. It's not recommended to do anything other than single lanes, because of people swerving around and trying to meet. It's also common that you don't put them where there's not curbs. If there's not curbs, you put some kind of other type of end on there, so they're not going into people's yards. If y'all have a question or want to speak, y'all go right ahead and stop me, and I'll jot the notes down. Again, the petition signed by two-thirds of the household, really needs to show that we do have a, the need to reduce the speed in the neighborhood, assess the impact on the other roads, petitions from other streets may be required, could cause traffic to move over to different streets.
Mr. Hancock, can, can you better clarify, petition signed by two-thirds of the household? What's, what span of space is two-thirds of the household required? A block, a thousand feet, a mile?
Well, each case would be just a little bit different. I mean, if y'all don't mind, we'll use the Wilson Street, because that's the one that we've been talking about. Clearly, that's, even though that's one section, that's two different areas, because you have a street coming in midways. So, now you've got two blocks there, you're gonna have to have one on one side and one on the other to do any good there. Otherwise, you're just gonna, people are gonna run up, and they'll stop, and then go over, and then go again. So, it would be different. Each one would be looked at by our engineer, and he would design to tell us what he recommends, in my opinion, but it's, once y'all decide.
When we say two-thirds, you know, if you're taking the entire street, say, from Main to the railroad tracks, that's not two-thirds of the houses in that, in that, quite that large of a span. It's gotta be shortened in some way, shape, or form...
Yes.
To, to, to be feasible.
That's correct. That's correct. Most...
But wouldn't the two-thirds be between Cedar and railroad tracks? Two-thirds of those people, that, that's the project, so two-thirds of the people need a speed hump, and then you decide where in that span the speed hump's gonna go. Isn't that kinda how this is gonna work?
I think the idea is that the, the very project itself is initiated by, by citizens, right? This is brought to the city. What, what Mr. Hancock is describing is how that, how that process would work, depending on the, on the policy that council ultimately adopts. But the approach we're recommending is that the conversation starts with the citizens perceiving that there's a speeding problem, and it's the citizens who initially define what the, what the scope is and what the project limits are, whether it's one block, two blocks, three blocks. One of the things we're recommending here is that at a minimum, it'd be a block or a thousand feet. And to answer Mayor Protim Nelson's question, once that project limit is established, one block long, two blocks long, three blocks long, one block this way, one block that way, the idea is that we receive a petition from all of the abutting property owners, all of the property owners on both sides of the street that would be affected by, would be benefited by those prospective speed humps. And the suggestion here from the staff is that in order for the discussion to continue, that at least two-thirds of them sign the petition and indicate to us that this is something they, they want. And as we go on in the presentation, there will be other elements of this, like how it's paid for, because it's also possible that, improbable, that the neighbors would be asked to, to pay for it. And obviously, that's up to city council ultimately to decide too. So, that's, that the citizens know that in order for this to get started, we need to hear from them. The citizens know that they're likely to, going to be asked to pay for it, and so, it's, it's important that we know that a, a good percentage of them, whatever percentage you guys ultimately decide, really, really want this. We had this conversation with the Wilson Street neighbors, Mr. Joe, Mr. Hancock, and I did, a few weeks ago, I think we reported back on it. And they, and they heard all, and they, they are interested in speed humps. I don't think that's a unanimous message we've heard, but I think we, we heard from a good number of them. And one of the things they heard me say is, it's not uncommon for cities to install speed humps, because the neighbors have asked for them, and then six months later, a year later, property owners change, they move in and are out, or property owners, once the speed humps are installed, decide that they're not, they're not as in love with them as they thought they might be. And Mr. Hancock's gonna get into that too. So, that's, again, trying to answer Mr. Nelson's question about, yes, it is, the petition would be from everyone who lives on the block, however that block, however that project limit is defined, and we're thinking that a good percentage of them need to indicate that that's what they want.
Councilmember Ennis?
I'll still have more questions on that point. One thing I want to ask is demonstrated need to reduce speed. Where does that come from?
In most cases, that we've read up on, is cities don't just want to put one in just to put it in, if there's not a need, because you're also affecting more than just the travel of the normal people. You've got all your emergency services that need to travel up and down the road, so by having the speed hump, it will affect them.
Well, my concern with that is, I've been living on Pecan Street for nearly thirty years, and we have asked the city for speed humps on numerous occasions during those thirty years, and it has met with, well, they're, they're not speeding. And they put those, we put those things out, that judge those kind of, gets that kind of feedback, and of course, as soon as people see them, they slow down, so there's not a need anymore. And I, I, I look at those things, and I go, that's worthless. That kind of, that kind of fact-finding is worthless to a project like this, in my mind. So, I'm, I'm gonna be very interested in how we determine what the need to reduce speed is.
Well, that's, that's a very good point you made, because that's what I, next step I was gonna tell you is, we would see, receive the request, and the first thing we would conduct, it would be a speed study.
And that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah.
They're worthless, in my, in my consideration.
Well, Councilmember Ennis, does it, it, might I suggest, sometimes it depends on what kind of speed study? Because to your point, if it's the, you are going, that big flashing speed sign, that may very well change somebody's behavior, but I, I believe that this, that staff has also sat in an unmarked car with a radar gun. Is that a better way of collecting data, in your opinion?
Probably, but I've never seen one do that.
They, they did it on Wilson Street. So, so that's a great way of, I, I think that's excellent feedback of, of how we get the, the data, and so I just didn't know if there were other methods that you thought would be a better way.
My, my concern is that we know there's speeding on the streets, so we don't want it to come back, and y'all tell us there's not speeding on the streets, so therefore, we don't need the speed bumps, because we know there's speeding on the streets. So, it would be just another way for our, our organization, the city, to placate the citizens by not putting the speed bumps in, by using faulty information, in my, in my opinion.
I, I appreciate the, the perspective. I will push back and challenge that often, if you're in your house and someone drives by, you, they may think you're speeding, and you may be in your car and know that you're not speeding, but it, that speed becomes a, a perception thing.
I've been living there for thirty years, and I know what I'm talking about.
I understand, I understand. All right.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To that, to that point, but the, the installation of a speed hump, speed bump is not predicated on just speed, is it?
Well, it can be, it could be, but most of the time, it's gonna go along with the amount of traffic on the road.
So, it's, it's not, that's not, it's not the single factor of speed? A lot of it's gonna be the, the number of people who've signed the petition, the, the amount of traffic, it's not just...
It's gonna be multiple things, of course. It can be whatever y'all decide y'all want it to be.
The speed study is just a part, just a part of the process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's, that's exactly right. We would go through, and after the study was done, we would share with our results with the residents, depending on which way we go, city pays, y'all, share with them, cost sharing, or, and everything, and then let's say we receive a good one, and we want permission, then we would bring it to the council for recommendation to, for approval. And then, of course, funding would be provided. Sometimes it would be, it's up to y'all, if y'all would say this amount, city pays this, this low. And then, construction. The next slide is actually the one that we was talking about, Mr. Hoffman was talking about earlier, is the eighty-five percentile speed. Forty percent, forty miles an hour and under, the residents would pay a hundred percent. Forty miles, over forty miles an hour, the city would pay a hundred percent. That number can be changed to what y'all feel comfortable with, or totally wiped out. That's why we're here tonight, to get your feedback, to let us know which way you want us to go with this.
So, the eighty-five percentile speed is the percent of people that are going over the speed limit?
The eighty-five percentile is the, the average speed for eighty-five percent of the vehicles traveling down that street.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Hancock, and for clarity purposes, the validity of petition is based upon the validity of the signatures on the petition to reach that two-thirds number?
Yes. That's what we're saying, that's what we're asking for, but I mean...
I just wanted to provide clarification.
Yeah, it's just, we can change it to...
Councilmember Rogers?
I just had a question. You have in there that it has to be a residential street, right? Part of your things, and it, you can't have it on a school zone. Is that correct?
Correct, not in a school zone, because anytime you do something in a school zone, you're taking the attention away from the drivers on what's happening, and that's not good, because then they're not paying attention to the children and stuff.
And since, what is it, alley A, or whatever, is that considered because it's not a residential street? They're allowed to have a school zone in a...
That's a good point. That is true.
I mean, I'm not arguing, I just, I guess I'm always the devil's advocate, you're, the city installed one in a school zone, but it's not a residential street. And I'm not sure that's actually, I'm not actually sure it's...
Yeah, but it's not a city street.
...speed control for school zone, the chief will probably have that set on alley, is that A?
Yeah.
But it's not like lowered for school zone during hours, like it is over on Old Dawson Highway, is that correct?
Yeah.
Because I wasn't sure if that was a true school zone, I mean, we all treat it like a school zone, because there is a school there, but...
Great question. It is a, it is a true school zone.
Okay.
I just don't know if that technically is going to be the speed humps that Mr. Hancock is talking about now.
Oh, no, I was just making sure, that's why we, I just want to make sure we write it, so we're not breaking our own rules.
Yes.
That's all I'm saying.
That's correct.
Because that's not actually a residential street.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not killing ourselves.
As we've talked about, the relation to speed and the cost sharing, a minimal speed required for, for our project to be eligible, some of the pros are impact of, of the police officer's time enforcing the speed in the area, impact of walkability. The cons are impact to first responders, impact of noise, visibility impact, the signs and the markings to go along with it, that's gonna draw the driver's eyes. Next step for us would be schedule a meeting to meet with the Wilson Street neighbors, and also schedule a, putting together a policy to bring back to y'all. I do have some pictures of different things that you might want to see. Each location would be a little different, depending on the location, but it'll have a speed hump sign. It is required to have the speed limit posted under the sign, because the engineer can design the speed hump for so many different speeds, so you need to post what speed for each hump.
That's one thing, Mr. Hancock, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, that's one thing folks need to recognize, is the speed hump is located, but then you have to have a sign on each side.
On each side.
So, that means, as a resident, you could have now a sign mid-block in your yard that was not normally there.
Yes.
That's, that's what I was gonna bring up also, is they need to be aware that they're being okay with, okay, I want the speed bump, it has to be in Lyle's front yard, you know? You're gonna have to agree to both of them.
Yeah, and I mean, it depends on where it's located, how far do you want that sign? If it's in a big, long block, and you're down there, you may have the sign up further, you may have another sign right at the hump as a reminder, or markings on the road, or something even.
I think that's an important part, when, important...
For them to know, yeah.
Thing to, that the people that sign the petition need to know about when they're signing the petition.
Yes, sir.
That they may have a sign like that in their front yard.
Yes, sir. This is kind of a speed hump that we're looking at. It is just a rubber matted kind that just come in and down, but as you can see, they chose to put a sign there right at the hump. To me, I, I don't see how you're gonna put a sign right at the hump with fifteen miles an hour and expect someone to see it and slam on the brakes. To me, I would want it a little sooner. Rubber speed humps, as you see here, that's the same, similar to that, with just a little different colored markings. Over a twenty-eight-foot road, it's twenty-eight hundred dollars to put one in, for the, for just the...
That's the hump only, right?
That's just a hump, that's not for installation or anything. Different sign, just, they're a little different marking there, and, and just a little...
I have one more question, and I don't know if you know the answer, so, what is the life of that speed pump, pump, spump, we call it? And so, if we put it in, do we have to, let's say it wears out in five years, twenty years? I mean, what's, what's the livelihood of that rubber?
The ones that I researched, they said you need to maintain them for four years, meaning they could possibly come up, but they do say their, their lifespan is ten years. But, so what is it? Depending on how mu, how many cars cross over, would probably be the...
Thank you. So, it sounds like another part of the policy has to be, even if the neighbors pay a portion, if we, if council sets that kind of policy, if they pay a portion to get it installed, does the city take on maintenance and replacement of that speed hump for perpetuity, or, you know, so that's something council needs to, to be aware of. Councilmember Rogers, I'm gonna let, Councilmember Ennis, did you...
I just have one thing to say, as far as I'm concerned. I'd like to see us to do the speed study to determine the percentile, but not as a determination of need. That's my personal feeling.
Councilmember Rogers, uh, yeah, Councilmember Rogers?
That's my name.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, what about, I mean, is there a liability, does the city have, if I drive over it, and you break my bumper off? I mean, is there a liability part of that? Is there something with the speed bumps coming in?
Mr. Borquez, did you suddenly feel everyone look at you?
I felt the attention of the room shift, yes, ma'am. As long as it's installed...
As long as it's installed according to specs, and the, the state's rules regarding those sorts of structures, there is no liability for the city. We would not be responsible for, uh, either accidents or for damage to the vehicles.
Well, I just know we had some cars that are very low riding, and just, and Dr. Jackson's trying to get your attention, just so you know.
Yeah, I, okay, thanks. Councilmember Jackson?
Right, I had two questions. I heard some of the conversations, some I've been, I didn't get, but my question was, um, you know, when we first mentioned this, I've, I've had some good and bad experiences with speed humps, uh, when I was working in Austin, but, uh, would this be a citizen, uh, or as requested by citizens in the neighborhoods? Uh, or would we, I was unclear whether this is something that's going to happen, uh, without the citizens recommending it, or would it be solely if a citizen or neighborhood's recommended that they have the speed bumps?
That what Mr. Hancock is presenting tonight is that it would be solicited by the neighbors, that would start the conversation, and it looks to have, um, a couple of different tiers, so to speak. So, if you have a neighborhood group, you may have one or two people that are complaining or concerned about the speed in the area, so we would set no less than a block, and no, and either a block or a thousand feet, define a project area, and in order for the, any of the things that we're talking about doing, the different studies and stuff, take general funds and take people's time to work on that, so you would have, once that study area was defined, you would get some percentage, staff is recommending two-thirds, council obviously can control whether, I would strongly encourage you to do something over fifty percent of the people that want it, um, and then, when, when there, we know that there is genuinely interest in the neighborhood, in the project limit, then we would take the next step and do, um, do a number of things. The speed study, have an engineer look at it and see where placement might be. I think Councilmember Ennis is bringing up an excellent point. The verbiage on that petition is gonna be extremely important, 'cause, um, if you sign the petition that it's a great idea, and then the speed hump ends up in front of your house, and now you don't want the petition, but that's after we've, the city spent money because you signed that you did want it, there, there's, there's gotta be a little bit of, and, you know, we, y'all can talk about that, but I think people need to understand what they're asking for. So, it seems to me, we have, what's the percentage of people that we want in a project area to agree? What, um, how do we wanna handle the cost of the original install and the long-term maintenance? And the cost could be, and, and you guys can make the rules, whether it's the eighty-fifth percentile, whether it's the number of people, whether it, maybe it's, whether or not there's been accidents, whether or not there's been tickets given, there, you know, y'all can set the criteria, whatever you want. And then, there would, I would think there would need to be, like, one last, um, if the citizens are gonna pay at, at any point, I would think, Mr. Hancock, you're not volunteering to go knock on doors and collect that money. So, part of, part of that petition would have to be them gathering, if there is a portion that council wants them to pay for, um, that, that, those funds would have to be collected before we would put in our part and put in the, put in the speed humps themselves. Is that your intention?
Yes, exactly. And I think also, something we need to look at is, let's say we install one, we, everything goes good, we install it, now they don't want it. I think we need to have a way to decide that. Whatever we set for install should be for removal. If it's two-thirds, let's keep it two-thirds. If two-thirds of the neighbors say no, it's no good now, we had no idea what it was gonna cause us, let's have two-thirds, or whatever number you decide, for removal.
We need to figure it out.
Well, that's what I was trying to, um, those were good points, Mayor, and I appreciate the clarification there. I understood a lot of it, I was just wanting to make sure that it was going to be, that the citizens would have input, uh, in the request process before we would start, you know, planning to do that. My other question was the type of materials, and I saw that there were some examples of different types of materials, because, uh, in my experiences that I've had in the past, I was also interested in making sure that it's a type of material that doesn't destroy cars, because smaller cars and some, some larger cars become damaged, even at the lower speeds, it can cause some damage to the, uh, cars, and we had, um, a suit at one time over that situation, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were, uh, taking that into consideration also.
Yes, sir, we are. The speed humps that we're looking at, you're looking at a three-foot wide hump itself, that it's gonna be two, two and three-quarter inches high, that's what they actually come in at. So, I don't believe it's gonna be much of an issue, we, I can do some more research to verify that, uh, I speak to several engineers, if y'all like, and find out what their opinion is on it, and bring that back, when we come back with more information, with a more policy. Just, if we could just get a little aim, which way you want us to go, and then we can bring it back, and we can tweak it from there.
Well, let's break it down, if that's okay with you guys. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, did you have something you wanted to say?
I, I did, I, I wanted to make sure that we're very clear that speed is not the only determining factor on whether or not a speed hump goes in, goes into play. That's a decision to, to the policymakers of, of whether or not speed is gonna be the primary factor, or just one of many factors in there.
Correct.
So, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that speed is only a single determining factor, and may not even be a primary factor in there, correct?
Yes, sir.
I, and thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, I also think we're not, we as council are not trying to set a policy that Mr. Hancock spend his days looking for spots for speed bumps. These are all gonna be generated as a neighborhood request. So, let's, let's break down the action items, so we can give, um, staff some feedback, so they can bring us something back to look at. Let's start with, is everybody comfortable with two-thirds of the project area signing off? And we can talk about what they're signing off on, but two-thirds, or do you want it to be three-quarters, do you want it to be four-fifths? What's your favorite fraction? Councilmember Rogers?
Okay, let me back up just one second. You're talking two-thirds of the-
Project area.
Whatever, um, to sign off to, to want them one. So, how many people, how many citizens does it take to start this process? Is it just one citizen? I mean, 'cause there's a lot of city time workers, even just figuring out the area, so-
Well, I mean, it would start with one, you're correct. But as soon as they would start, they would find out, hey, you have to have two-thirds of your community to before, of your neighborhood, before we can do anything. Well, so it's gonna start, start off with one, then it's gonna quickly rise up into the petition to make sure that they can meet that number of households.
So, like, if I came and wanted all of Tahitian to have speed bumps, I wouldn't need, I wouldn't, you would tell me to tell my neighbors to start a petition? Okay, I just wanna make sure we, it's not just one person asking it, then all the city worker time to-
And I think we would have the petition with already the language on it, that we would give to them to go out with and get it signed.
And then we, then the two-thirds to approve it, okay, I just wanna make sure we weren't-
They bring that back.
One-third starts the whole process.
They bring that back, with the, with the meeting of two-thirds, or whatever number, then, then we go with the study, and then we, eventually, after we get a few steps in, well, now we know a lot more, when we come back to y'all, y'all already have a real good idea of what's going on in the area.
Could we get the slide back up that says decision-making steps? Just to see what the staff recommendation-
There we go.
To answer, uh, Councilmember Rogers' question.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is-
Decision-making steps.
Keep, go, keep going, one more. There you go.
Okay.
So, so the idea is that, um, yeah, it, we, we don't need to hear from two-thirds, we don't need to see a petition to start the discussion, um, much like we've done on a couple of streets since I've been here, we're, we're willing to schedule the, the speed study, uh, and Chief Nagy, I think, can speak to how we conduct that, and why we have confidence in that. Uh, but we, we do have confidence in that, we think that is a valid reflection of what actual speeds are. And, and we'll do that, uh, pretty easily, when, when we're requested to, just to give us and the, and the neighbors good, good information. And like the slide suggests, once we get that, we'll get back with the residents and say, hey, according to our analysis, our, the eighty-fifth percentile speed is, is X. And again, how much all that matters is ultimately up to the city council, but, um, it is the staff suggestion that, and maybe to hone in on Mayor Pro Tim Nelson's point, um, it is the staff suggestion that speed does matter here. They are, they are speed humps, they're, they're great ways of slowing cars down, and if there isn't a demonstrated need to slow cars down, um, the city manager's gonna wonder why we're spending public dollars on that, and why we're spending public dollars from, uh, that come from neighbors who live, uh, ten blocks away to slow cars down on a particular street. So, we do think that speed matters here, and it matters to whether or not we build them, and how they get paid for, is, is the suggestion.
Well, I suggest that when the initial city, I mean, when you get the initial complaint, maybe you should ask them why they're doing it, 'cause like, Pro, Mayor Pro Tim says, it's not, that speed's not the only one. But if they, they're initiating the complaint because of speeding cars, then the speed test is there, but if they're initiating the complaint for other reasons-
That's a great suggestion.
Then the speed test isn't gonna do anything for what the other reason they want it for.
There might be something else going on there. It, it might be a issue of volume, and, uh, I don't need to be the city's only expert here, uh, on this subject, but, um, I don't think that speed humps are an effective way of controlling the volume of cars.
Oh, I don't know, I was just saying, whenever they're doing the initial thing, find out what their issue is before-
It could be that, it, it may not be about speeds, it may be about volume, it might be about pedestrian safety, and again, that's the nature of the conversation we had with the folks on, on Wilson Street, where frankly, we really don't think it is a speeding issue. We think there's other things going on, which led to the conversation with them about adding a sidewalk. If the problem was separating pedestrians from cars, which seemed to be more of the problem from the conversation we had with the people actually on the street, that's, that's where we talked about sidewalks, and where all of the neighbors we talked to on Wilson Street about, hey, how about we build a sidewalk and separate the pedestrians from the cars? They were all interested in that. So, just to your point, so, the, the initial request might be about subject A, but once you visit with people and talk it through, it may be subject B.
Right, so I was just saying, if, when you take that request, maybe take a little bit of time to figure out exactly what they're wanting.
Right, and why.
Yeah.
Right.
So, Councilmember Rogers, does two-thirds seem right, or you think it should be-
Well, two-thirds seems right, when you figure out exactly what they're wanting. You know, when you get to the proposal part-
Right, if we've established there's abs, there's, there's an issue, do you think it should be fifty percent?
I was saying, my other question is, okay, so if you, if I come to you and tell you I have a problem on my street, and until you figure out how long of that area, how do you know what's two-thirds?
So, they-
See what I'm saying? So, you're gonna have to come up with, you're gonna take some time to figure out how big the area is first, before you know whether I have two-thirds on the petition, so you're asking for-
Right, we, we could start with the speed studies, that's no problem, before you go for the petition, then, then we would know the area.
Well, I'm not asking for that, I'm just saying, when, when will the two-thirds start? I mean, if you start a petition, but I don't know how big my area is, so you don't know how big the two-thirds is yet.
Well, if I might, the, the idea is to have a conversation with the residents, and that's, that's, again, what we're trying to convey. We, we, we hear from them, they, they tell us, you know, the cars are going too fast from this location to this location, we go out and study it, we give them the results of the study, we continue to have the conversation. Again, I'll bring up the Wilson Street example again, I mean, they, they established that this is a problem from the railroad tracks to, uh, to Cedar Street, right? They're, they, they are kind of establishing for us what the limits are, based on their observations and what they're doing.
I think you answered my question, so when they initiated it, they told you the area that-
Yeah.
Okay, that's where I was trying to get to, is where-
So, there's a defined agreed project, and then you know where you're going.
And two-thirds is fine, I just wanna make sure, when, when were we defining the project size? That's what I was asking.
And, and trying to do that before we spend a whole bunch of time, but also use it as a, as a deciding point.
Yes.
So, if, if the project is defined together, then a petition of two-thirds, that seems like a reasonable starting point to you.
Yep, that's as clear as mine, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, are you okay with two-thirds?
Yeah, once, once, once the area is defined, yes, two-thirds, yes.
Councilmember Ennis, two-thirds?
I'm fine with two-thirds, but I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, with all due respect to the city manager's, uh, faith in speed studies, um, what I'm concerned with is you have people say there's a problem, and you do a ste, a speed study, which is what's happened in the past, and you come back and say, there's not a problem, they're not speeding. So, does this mean we don't get a speed hump?
Not necessarily.
That is ultimately up to council, as to how you wanna, how you wanna frame this policy. Uh, the, but the idea is, if we get a petition, we, we bring that to council, we, we bring to council all of the information, we bring a council, we bring to council a, a petition that the city secretary has certified to be valid, back to Mr. Nelson's point from earlier, and we'll say, um, council, we've got seventy percent signatures, so the petition is valid, and council, the eighty-fifth percentile speed from this point to this point is, is thirty-one, and it is up to council then to decide whether or not you wanna build humps. Part of that discussion, referring to the slide again, is, is how it gets paid for, and, and the example I just used, if you follow that kind of, uh, cost participation schedule, then, um, the, the citizens would be asked to pay for a hundred percent of the project. And again, different cities approach it that differently, the city could approach it differently as well. Uh, it is, it would be my recommendation that there is a relationship between the, the actual verified speed and the extent to which the city pays for it, but again, that is ultimately up to the policymakers.
Great, that's, that answers my, so, bottom line, it's, it comes back on the council's plate.
Yes, sir.
Something happens, because that's what's happened in the past, is the speed study's done, they're not speeding, so nothing ever gets done.
Well, we've never had a policy, and I, I think-
Evidently.
And that was the nature of the conversation we had back in August, that there really ought to be a policy that guides the decision-making here. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson, are you okay with two-thirds? Okay. All right, so, so the two-thirds part, yay, that, that's some direction. Then, the favorite slide on the forty miles an hour and the hundred percent, those numbers are completely up for, uh, discussion. These streets are thirty miles an hour, they, and I don't see Chief, there's Chief Nagy. Um, we ride a ticket at thirty-five, thirty-six?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Pull them over at thirty-five, right? So, um, council, we can say the speed limit's thirty, so if the eighty-fifth percentile is less than thirty, then if the neighbors think that they wanna speed hump, they, you know, like, we could do it, if it's less than thirty, the neighbors pay a hundred percent. If it's less than thirty-three, we can do whatever numbers you want, less than thirty-five, which would essentially mean you would not be pulled over by a police officer, then maybe the city pays fifty percent of it. If it's, oh, if it's less, if the eighty-fifth percentile's less than forty, then the city pays a hundred percent of it. That's, that's the kind, they've made a, a proposal, and that, we need feedback. Does anybody have strong feelings on, it, let's start with the speed, is forty too high, too low? I would think not too low. Is it too high? Do you wanna, if that becomes the, think about the speed at the point at which the city is a hundred percent paying for everything.
That's forty miles an hour on a thirty mile an hour zone, is that right?
Correct.
I think if it's above thirty. If that's the speed limit, then anybody who's speeding, whether we can ticket them or not, is another thing.
Okay, so you'd like, if the eighty-fifth percentile is thirty, then if it's below thirty, the neighbors would pay, if it's above thirty, and do you wanna do a cost participation, or do you wanna use that as the only divider?
I, I don't, I think the cost of participation ought to be, the, the, uh, the residents pay for the speed bump and the city install it, rather than a percentage one way and a percentage another way.
Okay.
I don't know how much it will cost to put it in. I mean- Uh, I mean.
They, it really wasn't cost the city that much, just the labor, because it's.
I, I, I agree. It, the buy-in is very, very important.
So you would, um, your proposal would be if it's less, if it's more than 30, the city picks up the tab for everything. If it's less than 30, the citizens are responsible for materials, is what I hear you saying. So that would be the speed hump and the purchase of the poles and the signs. But, but the city would provide labor.
And if we're put, and if we're playing poker on this, I'll go up to 35.
Okay. I want to play poker with you. Um, and what about the, in 10 years, in four years? And what if they, and they call us back in six weeks and they want it up? Do we just, we eat the labor for that and now we have one that we hope we can reuse somewhere? Or does it, if we put it down, it stays a minimum of six months or one year? You asked for it, you got it?
That's where I would say if it was put down, six months later, they wanted it up, then they pay for the labor to take it up.
Okay. And, and at a year, if it's there for a year and they get a petition to get it picked up?
Well, I think something reasonable, so we don't have them putting it in and taking it out.
And I would, I would propose that if the two-thirds was what we wanted to put it down, two-thirds is what they would need to get it taken up. Do you agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm, I'm, thank you very much. I've played poker with Councilmember Ennis. Now let me go play poker with you two. Is, are you okay with, is, do you have an opposition? And do you want to do his 30 or you want to do 35? Where are you guys?
I, yeah, I think we should start off at what the posted speed limit is in, in the impact zone. If it's a posted limit of 30 miles per hour, then, then your 85 percentile should be predicated on that. And I think that, that based upon the citizen participation or neighborhood participation, I would, I would advocate for a graduated scale based upon the, the amount over that 85 or under that 85 percentile.
You just want them doing math all day long?
No, I think, I, I think we, I think we have, have, have a chart. And it's, uh, 85 percentile is, uh, uh, you know, two miles over, uh, then the city, uh,
Pays 98%?
The city incurs the cost. If it's un, if it's under that, if it's under, two miles under that, then there should be a graduated scale, two, four, six, something along those lines. Not trying to do a math problem, just trying to create equity.
But I would say if it's 28, if the 85th percentile is 28 and it's posted at 30, why is the city paying anything?
That's, that was my point. It has to be over that the city, the city would pay that. Yes. Yes. Was that clear?
Which way are you graduating? He would, I thought, Councilmember Ennis, you were at, if it's below 30, they pick up the materials. If it's above 30, the city pays for everything, whether that number's 30 or 35. Are you game for that or you want it graduated different than that?
Okay, the, the, the cost, I'll, I'll go along with that for, for, for simplification. I still didn't think on that a little bit.
Okay. He's noodle, noodling that. Councilmember Rogers, where are you?
I'm okay with the percentage of the speed limit for, um, Councilmember Ennis. But I think it needs to stay down for a year before they can take it up. I mean, you've got to get some familiarity. And if the percentage is over 35, then the police department is going to pay for the speed bumps to go down. Cause that means they're all speeding.
That means there's a bigger problem.
Yeah. But I do think they need to stay, stay down for a year. Just don't like, okay, I don't like it.
Yeah. We can be spending, Public Works can be spending all their time putting them down and picking them up.
Yeah.
But can a speed bump be, be utilized over and over again safely? To be pulled up and placed somewhere else?
I would think so, yes.
I would think so. Uh, I can't answer that question to be honest with you. I've never solved one. Uh, but I can certainly look into it and get you that information.
But at some point in time, the, the, the life of that speed bump is going to be diminished in some way, shape or form.
Putting it up and taking it down, yeah.
And, and so I, I would think, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Rogers that, that there needs to be a set time. But I think it should be not one year. If the life of it is four years, then minimum it's going to stay down is two years, in my mind.
All righty.
Two years, great with me.
Okay, two years.
And just to give a little context in reference to the 85th percentile, 40 miles an hour, 85th percentile is people that are really moving quickly. So example is, is, so we use our radar systems and we actually use a radar system. The radar system is a box that's attached to a pole about the size of a lunchbox. So we no longer use the cables anymore. Now, Public Works, I think, has the, the.
And they do that mainly for traffic counts, I think.
And ours does the same, but it also picks up the speed using radar. And then that calculates that 85th percentile. Uh, I think like one of the highest ones we had recently was on Laura Lane in Piney. That was 36.
Thanks, thanks, Chief. I know why you're talking. It was not my husband, I promise.
We have a couple that, I think like the last one was in, uh, was on Pecan Street and that was 32. So it doesn't mean that people aren't speeding. You might have, uh, there's, there's always an outlier. You've always got some people that are going a lot faster than they really should be, maybe at 50 miles an hour. And then sometimes you even get motorcycles that, that may even go any faster. But the 85th percentile tends to kind of balance out. So that's what 85, uh, the average speed of the 85th percentile. I know it's not being real clear because it's hard to kind of, but that, like, so for Con Street, I just looked it up. It was just about 32 to 33 miles an hour.
So I, since I live on Laura Lane, um, the, it, it caused people to say, did, are, do, are we getting free wifi? Cause it was this real unobtrusive little gray box that was on a pole off to the side. And that's how they were running radar. So to your point, Councilmember Ennis, it's not a big sign that says this is how fast you're going. And it's not the laid-down traffic counters, so.
And to that point, also, your explanation of that 85th percentile, now I understand why my perception and most of the people on Pecan Street don't think your tests do any good, because you're telling us it's the 85th, 85th percentile. And all we're knowing is every time we turn around, somebody's speeding. Well, that one person who's speeding may be 1 in 30 or whatever. But the perception is that the street is unsafe.
Everybody's speeding all the time.
Yeah.
So I, I just looked at it. So like for Pecan Street, we ran a study, I can't remember how many days. I think it was seven. We had 6,000 cars who went back and forth. And it might've been three to 400 were that enforceable zone. And that enforceable zone is generally between 35, or 35 and higher. So it's difficult for us to pull over persons that are going much less than 35.
But the speed humps can help if the neighbors want.
So, let me have a question. So Chief said that the one he just did at Pecan Street, the 85 percentile was 32? So that means the city would pay the speed bump according to what Mr. Ennis said?
Unless we change his poker hand to 35.
You can say if that, if you're not, if, if you're not worried about them going fast on the 85% and at 32, that doesn't seem, maybe we should send, do the percentile to 85. I mean, 35.
It should be, yeah. You definitely, I think on the screen you had it at 40? It definitely needs to be lower than 40. So I would pick between 30, which is, or I guess 31, 35, 36. But still at that 36, you, you've got quite a few people that are pushing that average higher. They're speeding and pushing that average higher.
You said 35. How about 33 and a half? No.
Okay. So we're at less than 40 is what I hear y'all saying. So do we, do we just say 35? And we'll, we'll let, because we're going, we're not voting on it tonight. We're just trying to kind of lay out some policy. So if it goes down, it stays down a minimum of two years. 35 for the, um, 30, 85th percentile. If it's below that, the citizens pay for the materials. If it's above that, the city pays for everything, but it's down for two years. Is that helpful to, Councilmember Jackson, are you in agreement with that? He gave a yes. City manager, is that helpful to?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Helpful for y'all, painful for some of our other folks. Everybody else, everybody okay? And if you have strong thoughts, now's the time to, um, make sure that you send a note, ask Chief a question or send something to Mr. Hoffman, because we'll certainly look at it one more time before we will, um, vote on anything, a minimum of one more time.
Just one last thing there.
Sure.
Uh, where the speed bumps or speed humps begin, that speed, I mean, um, I think we need to lower the speed level there just for the going, you know, for the approach to the bumps and going over the bumps and everything. So that's a different situation, I would think. So I would hope that they wouldn't be going 30 miles over the speed humps on that. Or is that, seems like one of the signs I saw that had 25 or something like that, or they lowered it. Would that be the case or it's going to be the same with them going across the bobs as well?
That would be the case. We would have signs posted for what's safety to, to cross over the speed hump.
That'd be a part of the installation. Determining the right, the speed to post on the speed hump. Okay. Council, it is 8:10 and I have had a request for a bio break. So we, it's 8:10 and we are in a five-minute recess. And we will start back with item 6A.
Thank you, council.
We can't get done if we don't get started. It is 8:19 and we are back in regular session. We are moving on with item 6A. Present, presentation on the quarterly investment report for period ending September 30th, 2020, end of the fiscal year. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. Good evening, Councilor Mayor. So the full report is in your packet. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. Um, value at, at the end of June was 20, 27.5 million. Um, you'll notice that our book value at the end of September has gone up to 43.8. This is attributed to the revenue bonds of 21 million that we sold. And, uh, and then some drawdown because of projects that are ongoing all the time. Um, we still have our distribution of our investments. 35% CD and securities, 60% in pools. We still need to keep those pretty liquid. That's, the pool is where all of our project funds are. So, um, even though our policy says 10%, we're running at about 65%. You'll see from the details of the CDs and the securities that, um, we're not getting very good rates these days when we have to renew like we were even a year ago. So we'll start to see our rate of return go down over the next couple of years.
We're getting the same rate of return we all are getting at home, aren't we? It's just not, not that much. All right. Any questions for Ms. Waldron? Excellent job. Thank you very much. All right. We, it is, we report time and we have a number of reports. And brevity will be rewarded. I shall get, offer that in advance. Um, thank you very much for submitting your information. If you are watching from home, the first report starts on page 54. And we are on item 6B, receive quarterly report from the Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Center. Ms. Danielson?
Mayor, Council, Mr. Hoffman, thank you. I'm here to give the report on the convention center. As noted in your pack staff report, we were closed, um, due to COVID. So we had substantial losses. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but it is what it is. We had 36 booked days lost. We had 29 bookings lost. And we had over $40,000 in revenue loss on the third, on the fourth quarter. That's me. Um, I don't want to read our mission statement, but the part that I always like to, uh, draw your attention to is the convention center is here to serve our community and our guests, and we miss them. We really, uh, it's been hard on us for the last six months because that's what we do over there. Um, all I can say is Ben and Steve and I are just really nice to each other right now, just the three of us. So, um, and our vision statement, you know, we're here to showcase small-town charm and hospitality within the local meetings and events industry. And we are looking forward to the day that we can start doing that again. For year-to-date bookings, we were down 49%. Year-to-date occupancy, the number of days that people were in the building, we were down 34%. And year-to-date revenue, 44% on revenue and 49% on the Farm Street Opry revenue, noting that we were closed six months, um, of the year due to COVID. Uh, events, I am happy to report that almost probably 90% of our events have been rescheduled into the, um, 2021 year for us. I will be attending the Texas Association of Venues and Facilities Annual Meeting via Zoom on Thursday and Friday. And that's where convention centers, conference centers, civic centers, event venues, we all get together. And I'm sure the topic of discussion will be how we will rebuild after this situation. Um, the staff, we are working real close with the clients that have booked. And there have been clients that have booked since we've gone into phase three. Uh, in fact, I'm happy to report BISD will be there again tomorrow. Um, we are finding that the convention center is a perfect venue for training. We have the wifi. We have enough electrical in the floor where we can plug in their computers for them if they're there all day. So if you know of anyone that's looking to do training, that type of training, we can adhere to the social distancing. Each, uh, event, as you know, has to submit a health and safety plan, which they do, to Andreas and Mr. Hoffman, and those are approved. And we are able to do business in the convention center. The end. So I, I, it was short, not sweet, but it was short. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Ennis?
I think it's a credit to your abilities that these numbers are not worse than they are. And I thank you very much for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being a great partner. Councilmember Rogers?
I just want to say thank you for having such an upbeat attitude with such non-sweet reports.
Right.
But you keep a great attitude, you'll get going.
And I will share this with you. The first time I met with Mr. Hoffman, I told him, I said, "Mr. Hoffman, you're not getting the best of us. We've been through a lot because of COVID." I said, "But we're all going to come back and you will get the best of us. And we will thrive and we're going to overcome." I just know it. The end.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Danielson, very much. Yay. All right. Moving on to item 6C, receive quarterly report from BEDC. Colin, do we have Cameron? There's Cameron.
Hello.
Are you going to share your slides, Cameron?
Yes, we, we, are they uploaded or?
Yeah, they are. They absolutely are. You're, you're on. Colin, make it where we can see the slides. Yep.
So then do you want me just to tell you, Colin, to, to?
Yes, that'll work perfect.
Perfect. So what we can do is go ahead and skip to the outline. And the mayor at the last council meeting, uh, perfectly went over the TEDC conference, so I'm not going to repeat that. So, uh, mayor and council, I will skip to the COVID-19 relief grant update. And that slide, please, Colin. And just briefly, it does not look like we're going to need to do a fourth round. Uh, at the end of this presentation, I'm going to get into the sales tax data and show you that information. But I want to thank you for approving the third round. A, a large number of businesses, as you'll see in the next slide, thank you, Colin, uh, were helped by our third, three rounds of grants, 126 businesses, and approximately $576,000. And, uh, I have on the agenda at our November meeting for our board to approve our agreement with you, uh, for your generous donation of, of, uh, COVID grant relief money to offset some of that money. So, uh, thank you, council, for that. My next slide, please, Colin. And that brings me to our Tesla Giga Factory. And we had our study completed. And I'll be getting with my board over the next month to discuss the findings of that. And if you'll go to the next slide, please. Uh, the Tesla study is already showing its impact on our county and on our city and our website and our Opportunity Austin consultings, uh, consultants from Retail Coach have also shown and explained to us that this, uh, factory is showing number of interest in Bastrop County. And, uh, the growth is going to come much faster. And the growth is going to come much faster now. It's going to come supercharged because of the Tesla factory. So how are we going to prepare for this growth? The main thing, I want to talk about this with you tonight, and, and I'm going to get with Mr. Hoffman and the mayor. Benefit of having the mayor on my board is, is I can coordinate this, just like we did at the beginning of the year with our strategic plan. I'd like to do man, maybe in May or June, and after you as counsel has done your, have done your strategic plan, a joint growth summit between the EDC Board and City Council to go over how we can capitalize the best from the Tesla factory and our study and as the city and EDC to have aligned goals moving forward. So I'll be getting with Mr. Hoffman with that at our bi-monthly meetings to discuss that item. And hopefully we can, we can get that accomplished. Next slide, please. Next slide. So that brings me to the, some of the results from the study are that we need to certify and have a number of machinists, HVAC, electricians, and powder coating specialists. And fortunately, we have Project Gummy Bears that you approved. That's going to provide the Bastrop Advancement Center. And we're going to go ahead and change the name of this. This is now going to be moving forward, some form of the Bastrop Advancement Center and then the Foundry and Water Street Mill Expansion Project, because that's what we're doing. As you can see on the slide, we're expanding. As I explained to you at the last meeting and the meeting before, we approved this project, two businesses in three locations and providing for workforce learning and certifications. Update on that. We expect the project first phase of 205,000 to fund this week or next. And we also expect them to close on the purchase of the buildings this week or next. And then ACC, we're not exactly sure on their plans. They were, they were tentatively scheduled for November. And now we're, we're not, we're not entirely sure on that with COVID. And I want to give a shout out to Amanda Brantley from BISD. She's been amazing in coordinating with the certifications and grants through Workforce Solutions. And then, of course, my teammate, Jean Rehman Schneider, who's been amazing in coordinating with Amanda, as well as with ACC on this project. Next slide, please. Continue. Continue. Okay, so our sales tax. Counties are doing well, better than, better than the, sorry, that was my timer on this. I'll wrap this up. Better than the, the urban areas, fortunately, and Bastrop specifically, if we go to the next slide. Has done extremely well in all months except for April and June. Those are the only two months we did worse this year compared to last year. And as a whole, we are up for the entire year in the double-digit percentages. So that's great. Something that I want to tie into the COVID grants, as I stated earlier, is that even though we're up in the sales tax, the businesses that were affected primarily were in the hospitality and our smaller businesses, not the big box sales that were benefiting so much. And that, that encompassed all of our grant recipients for those smaller businesses. And then in the third round, when things really started to rebound for some of our retailers, it still was not for, for our hospitality and our restaurant and bars. And that's why for our third round, that, that was almost exclusively all of our recipients for that third round of grants. So that's how it ties in to the chart here on how our grants were done. And fortunately, everybody's rebounding. And so we're going to see, this is the, so the public knows and you know, this was the direct benefit of these grants was so that way when we were able to rebound economically, all of our businesses would be open to open their doors, to start this revenue, to start this sales tax coming back in. So thank you to our small businesses and thank you to counsel for your help during this time, especially to the City Finance Department. Once again, I thanked you at our TEDC seminar, and I want to thank you again for your help and, and the grants. Tracy and Trina have been phenomenal. Next slide, please. So that brings me to, to my wrap-up. We're going to work on the next 12 months, getting Career Technology up and running, our industrial park developed, and market Bastrop open for business with an emphasis on the Tesla project. And really sell us as the next frontier for development for Central Texas. But most importantly, and something I want to unveil tonight, is what we're doing in partnership with the Chamber over the next 12 months. We're going to do four growth seminars for our local businesses. That'll be free, go-to meetings, Zoom meetings, interactive meetings for our businesses. They're going to be in January, April, July, and October, the last Friday of each month. And we're going to have topics ranging from how to set up Google My Business, how to negotiate commercial leases, and how to, how to promote your business through online marketing, Yelp, Facebook, et cetera, and how to set up websites and the ABCs of that. I'm looking forward to that. And that concludes my presentation. Do I have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cox, for that supercharged presentation. Counselmember Rogers?
Can you give us an update on 9/21?
Yes. So we will be done in the next two weeks. Hold on, two and a half weeks? Two, two to, two to two and a half weeks. Depends on AI and getting their, their low voltage and their IT people in and getting their stuff finalized. So.
Any other questions for Mr. Cox? Great job, Cameron. Appreciate the good information. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Counsel, we're moving. Moving on to item 6D, receive quarterly report from Bastrop YMCA. Ms. Moore?
So hello, everybody. I want to tell you, first of all, that I'm humbly stand here before you as well as appreciative for the contract and the opportunity for the last 10 years. That partnership has allowed me to serve people. And that, that's what I'm supposed to do, so I'm grateful for that. I'm going to be quick. You're not even going to have to cut me off this time. Okay, so if you look at our prison, we opened the pool back in June, on June the 1st. You can tell by the number increase, consumer comfort came back slowly, and then it got cold. So we were at 25% of what we actually did in 2019, but we still were able to do all of the programs in a smaller form that we typically do, group swim, swim league, swim lessons. We did more private swim lessons this year than we did group swim lessons and lap swim. Lap swim and therapeutic swim were huge. We are continuing with our group exercise. Right now, we have 15 classes on the schedule. You can tell our numbers are really, really low, but it's coming back. Numbers are coming back. We've got about half the number of classes on the schedule than we had this time last year, and probably about 15% of participation. But people are coming back. The outdoor classes are doing better than the indoor classes. Surprise, surprise. Wow, I'm going to really have to work on this format thing. I do, we really, really do have the best members in the world. We ended in September with 277 membership units. With the pool closing in October, there's 30, 40 people that have canceled since then. But with our membership, we've been able to do the swim lessons, serve and per, hand out and distribute food. I mean, we've really had a good season. But we are very much open to the possibilities of the future. Everybody has mentioned the Halloween Bash. We have 20 vendors for that event, which is super exciting. We've, working hard to make it super exciting as people drive through there with characters and music and all that kind of stuff, so we help people come out. Starting in November, we have a kickball season, a youth kickball season starting that is a socially-distanced sport. And so parents are feeling a little more comfortable getting their kids involved in that, as well as cross-country, those types of sports. And then we have our first-ever team cornhole league starting in November. This is for families. So you can be any age. It's a members, it's two team, two-member teams. So we're trying real hard to be able to serve. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Tariq. Mayor Protim Nelson?
Oh, it shows how impressive you are when your first comment is, give you the opportunity to serve. That's special.
Well, I am grateful. I truly am grateful.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. Appreciate the YMCA. We're moving on to item 6E, receive quarterly report from Visit Bastrop. Ms. Smith, look what I brought with me.
Yeah, I have some in the back as well. Yeah, there you go. Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see everyone in person. I'm so excited. Okay, so this is actually our, whoops, this one. This is actually just a one-month report for us because we did our, the first two months of the last quarter at our joint city council meeting. So there's no need to repeat all of that. So this is actually what we've accomplished in September. I took a basic and advanced skywarn, skywarn training, so I know everything you need to know about clouds and if tornadoes are coming. And I believe the city put that on and I was very grateful and enjoyed it. I attended the Bastrop Historical Commission meeting, the virtual annual summit business meeting with Texas Travel Industry Alliance. I also sat in on a Tesla contractor meeting, which was very interesting to learn how to become a contractor for Tesla. One of the great things that we did, we were guests at Film Alley and participated in their spark bowling. And they are one of the very few places in the state of Texas that has spark bowling. So if you haven't done it, I would highly recommend it. It's a great family, good time. It's really fun. We also participated in the uniquely Bastrop webinar through the Visitor Center. And I'm on regular calls with US Travel to talk about legislation regarding the tourism industry. Now this, I said that we're talking about September, but this is actually year-to-date because we didn't have those numbers for August and September. So one of the things that I really want to point out here is that we submitted 44 leads to our member partners throughout the year, and that equated to about $6.4 million in economic impact. Of those 46 leads, we booked 37 of them to definite. So that's definite money that came in. That economic impact, as you can see, is about $4.7 million of real dollars that came in. That's about an 80% conversion rate. Now, we did lose some for COVID and we did lose for COVID, but a lot of them have been rescheduled. But we've also gained some back for future years. So that's, it's really good news. And I think that the assists that we've sent over to the Hyatt, you know, that's showing about $8.2 million in businesses that we've sent their, their way for them to bid on. And they were able to close $1.1 million in revenue. Now, that's not closed in this, it's closed business, but it could be the events happening in '21, '22, or '23. So we, because we tend to book pretty far out with these businesses. So that's great news. And then we continue to work on React, Rethink, Recover. I think one of the biggest things is we're continuing to track consumer road trips outside of a 50-mile radius. Definitely the drive market is where it's at, and we're continuing to provide our partners with COVID information and tracking the impact of the virus on travel intentions, because that really helps us decide which way we're going to go with our marketing efforts. Traveler sentiments, they're actually getting a lot better. And travel really, we obviously took a huge hit, but Americans are looking to see that, that they will travel in an area that they know is safe. So if an inju, if a hotel or a restaurant or an event or an attraction, you know, puts out there, what are my measures for keeping you safe while you're here, those are the places that, where Americans are tending to go to. So continuing to have that communication to the traveler is very important. And there's been a lot, a net positive change in people prioritizing leisure travel spending in the next three months. So that's, that's also a very good sign. The only other one I wanted to really show you is that people are happy. There's been an increase in people looking at advertising for, for traveling and that, that's just good because that's, their people are thinking about traveling again. Americans are placing relatively high degree of trust in tourism organizations such as ourselves. Again, looking for that information on how to be safe and be ready. And just real quickly on convention travelers, 49, we're up about 9%, 40, from 49 to 40.8% in June in terms of people saying that they would travel in the next six, six months to attend a meeting. That's really good. It may not be a huge difference, but the trend that we're seeing is it's just continuing to, continuing to grow. Visit Bastrop. Now, this is our September stats for our website, and I'm going to pull out my cheat sheet here. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but I think the important thing to know is that our organic sessions. Now, should I quiz you and ask you what an organic session is? So that's where people just query on a search engine, they type something in. Okay, so that traffic has gone up. Our number of impressions has, which is the number of times a content is displayed, has gone up. And the key, top keyword attracting visitors to our site is things to do in Bastrop. So that's really, that's really the big, the big hit. And there's no new information really from the last month. It's all about outdoors and what they can do while they're here. These are some of our, how many referrals are our partners are receiving from our website. The Hyatt Regency is, is one of our biggest hits. McKinney-Roths, Ziploc Pines, the Hill Farms. I mean, so you see, it's the whole outdoor piece that's very important. Bastrop Visitor Guide Sneak Peek. Well, by the time we submitted this, it's here. Yay. I have to share one story with you in the interest of time, but it's a really important story. Our printer had, that did the printing of this guide, had this guide sitting on his desk. And he had a vendor client come in to his desk. He was like, "Hey, what's that?" And he said, "Well, that's the new visitor guide that we just did for Bastrop." And he said, "Bastrop?" And he picked it up and he started thumbing through it. And he's like, this is a true story. He said, "I've got to go there. I had no idea they had so much to do." So even before it hit the FedEx truck, it was already working. D Magazine, we just did a full-page, split-page in the D Magazine. That's the Dallas Magazine. It came out today. They did a section on the Hometown Getaway and actually got the hard copy in the mail today. It looks really fabulous. And Dallas is part of our drive market, so that's an important piece of advertising for us. Connect, that's our meeting planner, one of our meeting planner placements. And then we placed a half-paid advertisement enlisting in their guide. I'm going to skip this one for now. Tour Texas is, this is our profile that we have online with Tour Texas. And what this is, is what, what these numbers say is it's the number of, numbers from that profile of people that looked at our profile on the Tour Texas website. This is one place where we do make a solid investment every year. Google paid search, this is most, more of the people looking and searching, mostly, mostly just organic searching, and it's, and it's gone up. I'm not going to bore you with all those details. These are the highest searches when people type in, what comes up when they go to the Visit Bastrop, to the engine, the Google search, and how they're searching by either laptop or mobile phone. Our Leisure Newsletter, we sent out 230 successful deliveries with a 38.7 open rate. That is outstanding in the world of e-newsletters. So people are opening it and the amount of time that they're actually on it tells us that they're reading it. And they're act, and they are also clicking out through to our partners. So that's really good news. And that's it. How'd I do, Tracy?
Do you want to talk about Jonas at all?
Um, I, yeah, and I didn't bring up Jonas because it happened in October, so I was going to save it for January. But the Music Friendly Committee is on fire. They are just like on fire. I've never seen so much energy. And what Jonas did was outstanding, and there will be so much more of that to, to come. I just, it's very exciting. It's a really, it's a great group. Thank you, Doc.
Outstanding. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Any questions for Ms. Smith? Good job.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to item 6F, receive quarterly report from the Bastrop Opera House. Ms. Holcomb?
I will probably get the award for the quickest report. So the Opera House is up and running. We have completed two successful runs of shows, two different shows since we opened back up after having been, you know, to shut down. And I will tell you that trying to navigate the whole COVID, you know, all the safety guidelines and everything and keep everybody safe when you're having groups of people come in has been challenging, but I think we've done really well. come in has been challenging, but I think we've done really well. Okay, so the first show that we did was Exit Laughing. And we actually did that one in September, but I don't think I reported on it in the last one. And just to let you know that right now, we're having to keep our seating limited to 50 because we are not selling any tickets at the door. We sell them all online. People go in and they can pick their, their seats. And then we cut it off a few hours before the actual showtime. And we go in and then we, because we are very fortunate to have chairs that can be moved. And we go in and then we safety, you know, socially distance the groups of chairs. So that they're then able to sit down once they, masks are required and then they sit down and they can pull their masks down, but they have to put them back up to, to move around. We just finished Dearly Departed this last weekend. Both of these were comedies. We felt like people just really needed to laugh right now. And I will tell you that when we opened back up, the very first show that we did with Exit Laughing, the one I just showed you, when we stood up to give our opening, our, our pre-show announcement, people stood and cheered and clapped. They were so happy that we were up. I think we could have stood there and just made faces at them and they would have laughed their way through it. They were just so excited to have live theater again. So we just finished this one. And we have announced our 2020 and through 2021 season productions. And you can see them up there. The next one is Elf the Musical. And we are hot and heavy into those rehearsals as well. And we have The Art of Remembering, which will be our competition piece that we hope to be able to take to the Nationals this next June. The Silent Sky, A Midsummer Night's Dream, Deliver Us From Mama, Hello My Babies, a big musical that we'll be doing in May. And we will end the season with You're in Town, the Musical. Yes, that is a real musical. It's actually a pretty, a pretty famous musical. As you see, we didn't add in what we normally have, a lot of the smaller special events, our bands that come in and dinner theaters. Because we just don't know if we can do those right now. Well, we can't right now. But if we are able to, if things change, then we have spots where we can add some more of those special events in. The Opera House is currently sitting 50 audience members for Elf. We are going to try to up that up just a little bit. Tickets sold for September and October were 365 tickets. That is way, way, way down from what we normally would do, but it's to be expected right now. Tickets sold from outside of Bastrop County, from those 365 was 216 were from outside of Bastrop County. So you can see that even though we're having limited sales, we're still bringing, bringing in a huge amount from outside. One thing that we've started doing different is online streaming, our Saturday performances. And we did sell 45 online streaming tickets. So we think that's going to go over really well. Bastrop Opera House, our quarterly volunteer hours were 225 hours of volunteers because we have a lot of volunteers. And while they're not all comfortable coming back yet, we have a lot of them that have. And that's it.
When does Elf open?
The first three weekends of December, there will be nine performances. So every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the first three weekends.
Congratulations. And I know that you are one of the few theaters in the area that's actually going to production. And I understand that you've gotten actors audition from all over as a result of that.
We had some coming from Broadway that can't get work or anything. And they're just, they're just wanting on stage so bad that, I mean, they've, they've come back to live like in Austin. So they came to audition for Elf. And we're like, Broadway's lost our gang.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any comments, any questions for Ms. Holcomb? Thank you so much, Ms. Holcomb. Good, good luck. Or break a leg, right? That's what I'm supposed to say to you. Okay, Council, moving on to item 6G. Receive quarterly report from the Lost Pines Art. Good evening, Patricia.
Good evening. I think I can speak in this without having to move it. Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. Congratulations, Ms. Rogers, bringing 25 years of sweet things to Bastrop. Well, it's been a very difficult year for the Lost Pines Art Center having COVID. And, you know, it's not new. It, we're one of, you know, all the other organizations. But during, can you go to the next slide? I put all my slides together as two slides because I figured we were going to be remote. So it's kind of jammed together, but I'll go over it. During the last quarter, we helped to facilitate the final move of Art Institute to the Art Center. So we're glad that we were able to do that. And they're all established, so you can come by and check them out. We reopened the Art Center to the public for traffic on September 1st. And we had our first Art After Dark the first weekend of September. We were very cautious because we had to do social distancing and we didn't know. We had people that were telling us, you know, they really wanted to come to the Art Center. So we spread chairs out. It was unique because we spread chairs out throughout the building. And it was, people were very glad to come. October, we had more people. We actually had quite a few, more than 50% of the people that came for the Art After Dark in October were from out of town, from different areas. We had one gentleman that stayed in a hotel because he really wanted to come to Bastrop. And so he stayed in the hotel for the night. They say that the, the mother of invention, or the, yeah, the mother invention is, all of a sudden, I can't think of what it is.
Necessity is the mother of invention.
So we actually started the YouTube channel because we started our virtual exhibits and spotlights because we wanted to still keep the events going. And so this year, we actually started virtual exhibits on YouTube. And in September, we had 217 new people, new views, and four hours of viewing, which doesn't sound like a lot, but every video, and we've got all the videos down here, are one to one and a half minutes. We end each video, you'll see up in the upper right-hand corner with, you know, the logos of the Art Center and the Visit Bastrop, the City of Bastrop. And we had a gentleman, actually a couple, this week come down to Bastrop from San Antonio. They said they had to leave the big city crowded and come and get fresh air. And they had watched, they had done some research to, for birds. And so they came to our video and they watched it. And because they were there, they started watching other videos. And then they came down and they left with a piece of artwork, very excited to be in Bastrop. So tried to get them to move here, but we'll see how that goes. Can you go to the next slide? Our planned events. Well, we're emerging out of COVID. So a lot of things are still up in the air. One of the things that we will be doing is re-envisioning our programs with both getting out of COVID and with Art Institute in mind. We will continue our Art After Dark. We've combined it with our Art Getaway to have the cultural experience. Unfortunately, this last year, you know, besides losing the gala, our fundraiser, we also lost our Art Immersion, which was our art conference. But we're already getting inquiries from different teachers and students for 2021. So we're looking forward to doing that. And we have our art experiences, like the blacksmithing and glassblowing unwind. We did our, Saturday, we did an unwind event outside. So it was the first time we've ever done it outside. Everybody was separated into separate tables. And we had one, one of the students said that it was so relaxing. It was a gorgeous day. I'm glad it wasn't today because today could have been a horrible day to do it. And so what we're looking forward to do is additional marketing and promotions with our YouTube, extending our social media, collaborating a little bit with the Art Institute to see what we can do as far as, you know, group-type things. And making it clear that the Art Center is open. Because it does look like, you know, there's a lot of things in the news about the Art Institute, Art Center. And we want to make sure people know that we're still there. And that's everything that I had. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Patricia. Any questions, Council? Good job. Thank you. All right, Council, we're on 6H. Receive quarterly report from Bastrop County Museum and Visitor Center. Hi, Ms. Sapikas.
Hi, everybody. Council, Mr. Hoffman. Ready? All right, here we go.
That's right.
Okay. Just a little bit. Phew, what a year. The first two slides I took from the previous presentation last year at the end of the year. These were the goals that we were hoping to do. And so I wanted to circle back on those. And the one that stands out is the scaling up of our tour program. We are ready to go. We have the curriculum. We have the mentors, but we don't have the guides yet. So hopefully they'll come out. We didn't, we, the two that are ready to launch, we're ready to launch when we can do those. Next year, we have Jennifer Leisure will be our board president, who has a connection to BISD as she retired as a fourth grade teacher. So we're looking forward to working with her to launch some of those that are ready to go. And then we did not research and catalog lost communities yet. So Visitor Center highlights, you notice the new look and feel. It's a woman with her granddaughter and she's enjoying the Black Bear, Gloria. So this is really interesting. When I did this, I was surprised. 2017, 18, and 19, you can see the growth. We were on a trajectory that was just out the roof. And then now we are back pretty much to 2017 numbers. I thought it was very telling. It's just a graphic presentation of the numbers previously. So I did the whole year just because I was a little sad and depressed about things. And this reminded me about the Santa Claus letter, you know, the mailbox that we, we did with Rebecca and, of course, the parade and the Veterans Car Show. And it was just really wonderful. And of course, they're in this, our last fiscal year, so I was able to include them. We also won first prize at the main event, chalk art. One of our volunteers, Lori Mitchell, did that. That was really fun. And those are, that's how we ended the year, which is about half of what it was last year. We did end up doing three special exhibits, architecture, movies, and music and dance halls, which were really fun. Right now is the architecture one. We had two quarterly meetings with Rose and Michael Barnes. And we just did our first one this year. We did it remote and in-person at the Christian church. And it was very, very nice. It was very nice. And Jennifer Leisure, got to give her credit again. She made little mini fruitcakes. I would have brought you some, but they're, they would have been a week old, so I didn't do that. Wait, I'm going the wrong way. What? What happened? How do I go back? Okay, so real quick, just through these, this was the Homes Tour last year, which we don't get to do this year because we had 522 people going through homes, which would be impossible to socially distance. So I just wanted to remind you that it will be back. And go ahead, you want me to do it? Okay. So those are just some pictures from the Homes Tour. We also, those were the numbers. Oh, gosh, okay, I can't go back. That was rendezvous. And so we normally raise about $27,000 with the two events. We have canceled both of those. We are doing Homes Tour calendar and we're doing remote rendezvous, which I'm very happy to say have been very well received and very well supported by the community. So it's not as bad as we thought it might be, which is really great news. Our research library had an increase of 846 pieces to be added and 89 individuals reached out to the library in search of information. And there's the breakdown for you guys on where they came from. Notables, we purchased transcribing software with the Hot Puns. This is important because the oral histories that we are doing are really not very beneficial if nobody can research on them. So this transcribing software, Suzie Bloom, is coming in once a week and ensuring that they get converted to Word documents, which are searchable. So if you want to look for football and you want to know if somebody talked about football in one of their oral histories, you could find that without having to listen to every oral history to try to find it, which some of them go on, you know, an hour and a half or so. So that's really fun. We're doing a rotating display at the library. We've been sharing exhibits with Smithville and Elgin, some of the temporary exhibits, which is neat. And we're in the process, I have a memorial self-guided driving tour developed. I just need to get a rack hard for it. And those are the stops on that tour. Museum hours for this year, we don't have volunteers coming back strongly. They're, a lot of them are older. They're just not ready to do it yet. But we have one, Judy Ennis, our museum docent, is back. So that's really encouraging. And these are the goals. Many of them are the same, except for the virtual part. I will be including quite a bit more. We have Uniquely Bastrop already launched the four-minute videos. And then I do want to develop some other, other things with my new president next year in January, so. And then continue to catalog basically the similar stuff that we've, we've been doing, continue to do it and do it better. That's it. Any questions?
Great job. Thank you, Ms. Sapikas. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Sorry for the late evening. Appreciate your presentation. Council, we're going to page three, which is honestly the majority of the rest of what we have. Item number seven is citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, mayor.
All right, we're done with citizen comments. Moving, we don't have any items on the consent agenda tonight. For brevity, for item 9A, consider and adopt on first and final reading ordinance number 2020-29 as an emergency measure ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as the emergency management director in regards to the local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, or safety. Council, we are on day 226 of this emergency. There are currently 111 active cases in all of Bastrop County, which is in the 84,000-ish sort of population. We had the number of active cases go down by one over the last, last period. We've been right around 100. We've been a little bit lower, a little bit higher, but it's kind of maintaining that number. The positivity rate in the last seven days for the state of Texas is 8.9%. The positivity rate in the last seven days for Bastrop County is 4%. Being a 4% county and following the governor's orders, that allows in-person nursing home visits, which has made a huge difference for folks who have been longing to be with their family. The people are tested. They have a negative test to be able to get in. You know, they've got, they've got a very specific protocol for that. But because we are a low positivity rate, it is allowing the in-person nursing home visits. I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that. The five-county MSA are, these are numbers that I give you at the update, and I wanted to do that again. Hospitalizations, people that are currently in the hospital in a five-county MSA is 114 people. And, but I want to say that the total hospitalizations were, that's still at like 4% of all the people in the hospital, 4% of them have COVID. And the high was in mid-July at 19%. So just, just trying to kind of give you some perspective on that. The current ICU admissions for COVID in the five-county area is 43, which is flat from next week, last seven-day period, which doesn't mean it's the same 43 people, but it means that the number is 43. There could have been people who have gotten out and people who have gone in. The total number of people on ventilators is 18, which is down 25%. But ventilators, that number is so small. You go by, up by one or two, or down by one or two, and it's a large percentage. So there are 18 people out of the five counties on ventilators. The call center took 34 calls last week for a total of 2,930. And the testing done through the portal was 210 for a total through the portal, through county-controlled of 6,120. There was a press release by Governor Abbott yesterday that I'm sure each of you has memorized, so I thought I would highlight it for you. And that is letting you know that they are distributing rapid tests, that it's BINAX now, B-I-N-A-X, capital N, capital O, capital W. And they are distributing them straight to the schools so that school nurses can test children that exhibit symptoms. And they will find out in 15 minutes whether or not they have COVID. So fortunately, we are not responsible for the protocol of all that and getting the nurses trained and everything that's involved in that. But that is a huge benefit. And there, as of yesterday, there were three And there, as of yesterday, there were 3,276,000 tests that have been sent to the state of Texas, so that's a, that's a huge impact. Their vaccine distribution meeting started last week, and they are well underway, and in fact, tomorrow I will be participating in a tabletop exercise that's being put on by TIDAM, which you know is the Texas Division of Emergency Management called COVAC, and it's specifically about the distribution of the vaccine. Looking ahead, we've talked about Halloween several times this evening, just everybody make sure that you stay safe for Halloween, and football games is another area where, like, we're outside, and it feels really safe until you have kids that are interacting with other kids they haven't been, and now they go back to grandma, and so just, if you're at the football game, please, please be careful. So far in phase three, things are going very well. We don't recommend changing that phase, and we are riding along and looking forward to more details on a vaccine and encouraging folks to remain safe. So that's all I have for 9A. Nothing for you to vote on this evening. Item 9B, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2020-30 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, repealing and replacing Chapter 12, Traffic and Vehicles Article 12.12 Golf Carts, and providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, and enforcement, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the November 10, 2020 consent agenda for a second reading. Chief Nagy.
Yes. Mayor, Council, City Manager, thank you. Tonight, I am bringing forward a new golf cart ordinance that will replace the old golf cart ordinance. And what we're trying to accomplish is to allow persons that are operating golf carts more flexibility when they do operate their golf carts and wear, but then also making sure that the city's number one priority, of course, safety, is one of those goals. So it's real important, right before our start, that the intention of the ordinance is not to have operators of golf carts kind of replace what they would normally do in a vehicle, but it is supplemental, so they can go get ice cream with their kid maybe, maybe drop them off to school, or an early morning breakfast, or maybe an evening ride. So as you know, we already have an ordinance, that ordinance is pretty restrictive, so it's only for special events, and that's upon approval from the city, and that's valid for the length of the special event and/or the maximum of seven days. And outside the public, or I'm sorry, the special event process, I don't think we've ever had a request to use, to use a golf cart. So the transportation code does govern golf carts currently. It's also relatively restrictive, it doesn't necessarily apply to us, so you could drive in a master-planned community, or on a beach, or within two miles of a golf course. So then the bottom bullet is what allows municipalities to do what we're doing today, to allow golf carts operation on our city streets anywhere less than 36 miles an hour. So definition, really, a golf cart is just exactly that, it's a golf cart, it's what should be used on a golf course. It does not include an ATV, a four-wheeler, a mule, or a gator, so like the, on the far left, yes, sir.
That little thing on the end there, I don't know which one of those is. Why isn't that included?
Isn't that, so, on the far right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's going to be a neighborhood electric vehicle, and in general, some of those might already be street legal, and some might not. So really, when we put this together, I guess when the states start to try and regulate these, it's really just almost a soup of a whole bunch of different types of vehicles. So I chose really just to, really just regulate the golf carts, because they might be able to use that, the NEV, or the neighborhood electric vehicle otherwise, because it might have the blinkers, the working taillights, and stuff like that.
Okay.
So it might already be able to be used on our streets.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, great.
So if it's street legal, it has to follow everything just like any other automobile?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I got you.
So some regulations, the operators must be licensed, they must carry that license with them. It is important to note that there, one city has asked for an attorney general opinion if that is a valid rule, so that it is kind of up in the air. I suspect that they will go ahead and confirm that that rule is valid, but just in case it isn't, we might have to go and make that change. And then all operators must, of course, abide by all traffic regulations.
So you're saying if, if there's a 15-year-old that doesn't have their driver's license yet, they can't drive the golf cart?
That's correct.
Okay, just trying to clarify.
Yes. And the opinion that they're asking for is to make sure that that, that we can enforce that rule. So the maximum speed limit for golf carts is 20 miles per hour, and they're prohibited on any roadway of more than 35 miles an hour. They're entitled to the full use of the lane, and they shall move to the right if there's any vehicles as well. So they have to allow persons to pass them on the left when it's safe to do so. Lap riding is prohibited, and the lowest age for passenger is under four, and then they can't be used between sunset and sunrise, so we're prohibiting them use at night unless they are part of a special event, or they're traveling to, from a special event, I'm just going to use Christmas for example, and they're going from the event to home, or to home to the event. Golf carts are prohibited for passing the same lane that is occupied, so they can't pass a slower-moving vehicle, they must wait in line, and they shall not be offered to go over 25 miles an hour. Must have proper exhaust, and then they're prohibited from operating between adjacent lanes of vehicles. So sometimes you might see a motorcycle that cuts between vehicles, that's what we're referring to here. We don't want the golf carts cutting lines between vehicles. This is the required equipment, so they must have, of course, a brake, operational headlights and taillights, then side reflectors, and those might just be some emblems or the stuff you see on the trailers that are usually amber, rearview mirrors, can be the upper rearview mirrors or the side rearview mirrors, and then the slow-moving placard will have to be on the back of the golf cart as well. Registration with the city, so the police department will inspect each golf cart to make sure they have all those items I just listed. The new permit is $20, and then a biannual registration is $10. They'll have to have their registration and liability insurance with them, and the liability insurance will actually have to have the golf cart listed on the card. And to go back to the fees, is that is just to cover the police officer's time and also the sticker that we will affix to the golf cart. Each golf cart gets a registration ticket, it'll just be fixed on the, if they have a front windshield, or at least a front panel. It's non-transferable, so if you sell your golf cart and you want to use it within a city Bastrop to someone else, they'll have to get a new permit, and then a golf cart license plate is required, and that can be obtained from the tax office. That's about $10, and that's actually state law. So there's a, if you violate these laws, you'd be subject to a fine of not more than $500, so it's just the same as any other traffic ticket, a class C misdemeanor. I did look at some crash data, it's quite ambiguous, but it looks like in 2019, there were about 19 crashes for cities that allowed golf carts, and that includes Galveston, Smithfield, but it's, it's hard to gather that data, and in 2020 year-to-date, there was about 23. There were, I think, seven or eight minor injuries, and they had some kind of middle injuries, and lastly, in like 2020, they had seven that were significant injuries, but there were no deaths. This is just example of the registration application. It's pretty self-explanatory, the officer will get that, they'll fill out the golf cart information along with the owner's information, will get a copy of their insurance and a copy of their driver's license, and it also just has some operational requirements that the operator's going to have to sign for, said they received. And we'll move on to any questions.
Councilmember Rogers?
I have some concern about the four-year-old on it. Do they do, I don't own a golf cart, so do they have seat belts?
They do not, no.
Because, you know, the whole reason, like during the parades, we don't throw candy because you're not, you're never sure when your kid's going to jump right out there, so I'm a little bit concerned about a four-year-old not being strapped in, because, I mean, they, they react without us knowing they're going to react.
That's true.
So I'm a little worried about that.
Okay.
Without them even being secured, I'm not sure the legal part of, if you're driving a car, you have to have them under a booster, you have to have it locked, I don't know where that legal start comes in, you know?
Yeah, it's, so as it's written now, that wouldn't apply, but upon recommendation, I can make that age higher.
Are you wanting to up the age? Do you think four's too young?
Yeah, I'm just afraid a four-year-old might just jump off if he sees the ball running, or, you know, because they're only going 20, what, 25 miles an hour, so it doesn't seem like it's real fast. I'm just afraid they'd react without the parent realizing you're about to jump off.
Okay.
And, so.
What, what age would you recommend?
20. No, maybe 10 years old, you know, usually a 10-year-old has a little bit more sense, well, not, but anyhow, a little bit more sense than the four-year-old that might just run out. And since they don't have any seat belts, are you, a way for you to secure your four-year-old, and they're not allowed to sit on your lap, how are you going to control that child?
It's a good point. I mean, so part of it is, you know, people may want to take their kids to school every once in a while, and it might be primary or the younger kids, but if, if.
Well, actually, primary starts at like five or six, so still, you know, I just think the age needs to be up a little bit more.
Okay.
So you want to go to five, or you want to go to six?
Six.
Six.
Six it is.
All right, everybody good with six? Councilmember Ennis?
Yeah.
I have a question, but it's not.
Sorry.
I have a quick question.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
And you may not even know the answer to that. Is there any way to retrofit a golf cart to have seat belts, to your knowledge?
I believe there is, yeah. I think you can retrofit them to just about anything.
So could we have a caveat in there? If, if, if they're able to secure a child's seat in there by acceptable means, then perhaps, maybe we're carrying it too far, perhaps that might be acceptable to carry a child as young as four?
I would think so.
I think the language on that would be very tough to put in there.
Yeah, that might be something I have to refer to legal and see what they can help me out with.
Alan's got that.
Yeah.
It was so simple, why are y'all making it complicated look about him? What do you, give us some advice.
Yes, Mayor, first, I told the chief just to adopt it and tell y'all later. I think it's perfectly reasonable condition to put in there, it's not hard to draft. If you want to say, you know, no one under the age of five unless they're secured with a seat belt or a safety restraint, we can add those words in there.
I think you're okay with everything he says, except you want it under the age of six.
So, I mean, so legally, you can, you can drive a car on the street, and you need your kid in a booster, and they need to be here. Heck, actually, if you look at the law, I'm supposed to be in a booster, but, so how do they get away with the law of you're expecting them to have a driver's license, but they don't have to? I just want, just curious about that legal, how they get away with it one way, but you don't get away with it the other way?
Legislation promoting, quote, "golf cart-friendly communities" has been around for a decade or so, and every couple legislative sessions, they tweak it just a little bit.
Then I'm good with that?
I would think the biggest difference is you're strapping them in a vehicle that has the ability to go 100 miles an hour, and you have no idea how fast that vehicle's going to go, and in a golf cart, you're, it's.
I love that point, but you're putting a golf cart on a, on the road, where my vehicle could go 100 miles an hour.
That's exactly right.
And hit your golf cart, and I don't want to be liable for your, you know, so I'll try to go 20.
Well, this would be something that, Counsel, if we want to, if we want to make that change, it can also be like, maybe we review it every couple of years, or that we have, I would always expect that the chief, if there's an issue with it, like we've had a number of accidents, or, you know, gee, there's something we didn't think of, turns out they do have a seat belt in the back, or they're, the kid's sitting between mom and dad, and that's how they're keeping, you know, if there's something we're not thinking of, I know you would come back to us to be with, if you have additional information.
Absolutely. Councilmember Rogers, we're looking.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, I was just wanted to, I guess, opt in on that child safety situation. Maybe have we checked out with other cities to see if they have any ordinances that require child safety, or if there's a provision or a type of child safety device that's been developed? I think that would be something good for us to look into, because I'm, I too am concerned about, you know, two children and youth not being secured, even if it's going 20 miles or less.
Did, Smithfield, I know that was one of the ones that you looked at, did they address age?
I don't believe that, I think I really looked at Smithfield, I looked at Galveston, and I looked at another, which was the newest one, I just can't think of the city right offhand, I don't think they did. I think they just.
I can't hear you all, I'm sorry.
So the mayor had asked if I had looked at some other ordinances, and I looked at Smithfield and then Galveston, and there's another city that I really got a lot of my information from, I can't just think of the city offhand. I don't think they did, other than kind of what we're doing with the, with the minimizing the age. But with, Councilmember Rogers, I think what, what you had said was, is we're going to, under six, they need to be in some sort of safety device, and I know they do make some upfit kits for that, and then over six, they wouldn't have to be, is that correct? Okay.
Councilmember Ennis?
I was just going to say, I thought you did a great job on this. I didn't really have any questions.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
And when it's time, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Councilmember Ennis, I, we have, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, but we're going to put the caveat in there, moving from four to six as a minimum age.
Do you accept that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yes, four to six, the minimum age with a seat belt, right? Is that what we said?
To be less than six on the golf cart, you have to have a restraint of some sort.
Okay.
And so if you have a restraint, you can be three?
Yes.
Or two, or one?
Since I have a motion and a second, I would offer that perhaps this is not one that we would want on consent, since we've made some changes to it, and maybe we'd have it on the regular agenda, so that you can bring us, these are the changes from what we're reading this time.
Agreed.
I think we're going to need to define the restraint, it's not just going to be somebody decided to tie their kid down with bungee cords, it's, I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious, but I think the ordinance needs to clearly state that it's, you know, safety-approved device, seat, whatever the case might be.
Yeah, I'm, I'll research and see what they have available. We'll, we'll find something.
All right, really good job. I reached out to a couple of different golf cart owners, and they reviewed it and said that they were pleased, that the biggest thing they wanted is just tell us what the rules are, you know, that people are happy to comply, they want to be safe, but they need to know what the rules are, so I think this is a great step in the right direction.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank, oh, wait, we have a motion and a second, and the revisions to the motion that were accepted by the person who made the second, I have a motion by Councilmember Ennis that the ordinance number 2020-30 be approved with the cat, with the correction of making the, the age adjusted to less than six is required to have a restraint, over six is okay, and that it not be on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, thank you, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel, the last item on the individual consideration is 9C, consider action to approve City Council minutes from the October 13, 2020, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Proton Nelson. Second. And a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel, the motion passes unanimously. Counsel, we are going to have a very brief executive session. In executive session, we will be going over item 10A. City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interests associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 South State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas, 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. It is 9:26, and we are in executive session.
All right, it is 9:35, and we are out of executive, out of executive session, excuse me. We're on item number 11, take any necessary appropriate action, and there will be no action as a result of executive session, which brings us to item number 12, adjournment. I'm happy to take a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Move to approve.
You mean say, okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember. You mean, say, okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers in a second, from Councilmember Jackson, it is nine thirty-five, and we are adjourned. Thank you.